All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our special board meeting for April 14th, 2025. Tonight, we're going to have a special board meeting. We'll be taking some votes. And then we're going to move into our work session. And then that's followed by a closed session. So that's sort of the progression of our evening. For those of you who, I don't want to stick out till the better end. It could be late. Anyway, we're going to start with roll call. Kinsey?
Pecker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Lee?
He will be joining us shortly. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to action items. And go ahead, Brian.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Next.
I move that the transfer of staff as presented be approved. Second.
Any questions, any discussion? Brian?
So, one of these is my daughters, former kindergarten teachers, both of my daughters. Melissa Messenger coming up as an associate principal at Aldo. So during public comments, I just want to share some things that I heard that the public reached out to me. "I am excited for Melissa to continue at Aldo with this job. She loves the kids at Aldo and we're proud of her." That's from a student. A fourth grade student said, "She really knows how to work well with kids." Sixth grade student said, "She spends time with me when I need someone to talk to." "She's helped me become a stronger person. Great to take breaks with." This is from a second grader. "She's great to take breaks with, lots of toys," which I think is amazing. So that's a great one to hear. This is one of the TOSA positions that we've moved into and assuming that passes. And I can't be more proud of her. So.
Very nice.
Yes, she is.
Just raise your hand. Okay. What's that? I know. I know. Melissa was at Aldo when my girls were there. That's a long time ago. Yeah, she was very young and my girls were there, K through eight. And I remember you two. So, anyway, we have to take a vote? All right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right. Go ahead. No.
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Moving on to Catherine Johnson Academy. Sure.
I'd actually like to make a motion that we readjust the action items to vote on items E and F prior to D.
Okay. I would second that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Moving on to E. All right. We're going to talk about general contractor awards for Southwest High School renovation. Can someone, well, let's have someone read the motion first.
I move that IEI general contractors be awarded the bid for the general contractor renovations project at Southwest High School in the amount of $673,000 as presented be approved.
Second.
All right. Questions for Kale? Discussion? For those who are listening, can you just give us a brief synopsis of what this will be for?
This was an outstanding project from the 2022 referendum. Mainly Southwest High School gym renovations, athletic floor, bleachers, AV equipment. That's pretty much encompasses that project.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Brian?
I move that IEI general contractors be awarded the bid for the general contractor renovations project at Franklin Middle School in the amount of $739,000 as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions for Kale? Any discussion? Can you just do a same kind of little for people watching?
Similar. Gymnasium renovation. Not a full floor replacement in the gymnasium, but a refresh. This also includes HVAC and AV equipment in the auditorium as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. We're going to go back now to D. Status of Catherine Johnson Academy. And David Johns is going to join us at the table.
I move that KJ Academy closes the school beginning with the 2026-2027 school year while using the 2025-2026 school year to reimagine the school as a virtual program serving students across the district. KJ programming would commence in the fall of 2026, offering a full-time option to any students enrolled at the end of 2025-26 school year in KJ Academy.
Second.
Okay. David, did you want to, did you have anything prepared to share?
I do. Thank you. Good evening, Board. Good evening, student leadership. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. We come back to the conversation around KJ Academy. And I just want to point out to the Board some additions that were provided to you based on your requests at the last board meeting. Included in the board memo that is available to you, there's some additional staff-to-student ratios included in the table. And probably more of a direct response to your questions, there's a table toward the end that provides observations around KJ as a school in its current state and some similarities and differences should KJ operate more expansively as a program across our district. Everything that's included programmatically is in the language of could or would because the journey from KJ as a school right now into KJ as a more expansive program would come about because the team that has built their identity around KJ Academy would be significant leaders in this process. And so you don't see anything too definitive in that programmatic column other than just some examples of what it could look like. The motion speaks to a year where we would be much more definitive about what that would be. But I'm not certainly in a place to be the only one to speak to what those programmatic changes would be. That would be the work of the team. Thanks.
So our proposal is to close KJ Academy as a school beginning with the 26-27 school year while using the 25-26 school year to reimagine the school as a virtual program serving students across the district. KJ programming would commence in the fall of 2026, offering a full-time option to any students enrolled at the end of the 25-26 school year in KJ Academy. And our request tonight is that the Board have conversation and approve the proposal presented.
Okay. Thank you. Lynn?
I will support this. I believe that Catherine Johnson Academy, or whatever it's going to be called, Catherine Johnson something, will be able to serve hundreds more students. We started this, you started it, I wasn't part of it at a time of tremendous need and emergency. And it took care of what it needed to take care of then, but there's so much potential there. A much larger program can be adapted to the needs of many individual students. I think that the staff and you folks have seen over these last few years that what was started was for, my understanding was, for children who were going to have trouble moving back into face-to-face classrooms after COVID. And now we see so many other options for students. We see, you know, a student out of the country with his family for a few months, going to school every day. And as we've talked about, we see children in hospital beds going to school with their class every day. I think that its identity is going to become better known. We've heard a lot about people don't know about it, parents don't know about it, teachers don't know about it. It's not going to be a mystery anymore, once we make this district wide. Notice that in the proposal, students can attend from home school. So they can balance in and virtual. So a child who's now 100% homeschooled might be able to do a little transition and do part of face-to-face school on campus. Students are going to have an opportunity to try to be in a face-to-face setting as much as possible. My understanding from this proposal is that there'll be a lot more flexibility. It won't be either virtual school or in-person school. It can be a combination. So as David explained, when we had a meeting with the staff at KJA a few weeks ago, there could be a place in the school library where a child goes for one or two hours to do virtual school and then goes back to his or her classroom to do regular school. I think another thing, another advantage is that students are going to be more ready to try transitioning out of virtual education because they'll have the opportunity every day to be with other students instead of only being at home looking at a screen. Now, I know that, I think we all got an email today from an educator who was concerned about this. He had some important questions. He felt that the program might become completely or almost completely asynchronous. And right now, it's almost all teacher and student in synchronicity most of the time. And some of us have visited and we've seen that. And he's worried that it's going to become an asynchronous school where you just put kids to work on the computer and say, "I'll see you on Friday." And that's a valid concern. He also is concerned that right now, KJA staff are just KJA staff. And the long-term plan, David, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you might be teaching face-to-face part of the day and online part of the day. There might be some full-time virtual teachers, but there might be some part-time virtual teachers as it grows and expands. And so I did have an opportunity to call that teacher because I had met with him before about, you know, asking what was his ideas for how we could make it better. He wasn't able to join us tonight. He had a conflict. But my impression from him is that he has faith that we can make this happen and that he's not saying any longer, "We must vote no." So I will support it. I think it has tremendous potential. I think this could be a model for the nation someday. You know, this is not just a school where kids sign up and somebody out there in a lab made a video. And also, David pointed out in his proposal for us that once these teachers are all part of the district, they're going to have all of that district support. And part of that can be technology. Do you have any idea how much time those KJA teachers spend making their own videos? They make the videos for the students. And they will have support for that. So I know change is hard for some people. For some of us who have lived a life of change, change is just opportunity. But if we can just be open to the possibilities, there's huge potential here. So I hope you'll support it.
Andrew?
That's really, it's very nice when, for those of us who are privileged and fortunate enough for change to be something we can adapt to really well, that's a good position to be in. And many people are and some are not. There is nothing here. There is nothing here that requires KJ to be dismantled and destroyed as a school to be able to do these things. And I will go point by point. You do not, you do not need to be a, you do not need to demolish it, destroy it as a school to serve hundreds more students. I don't know how I could be more clear about this. We have, we have students right now, today, go to a school and take classes at another school. Like that is already a thing. We are already able to do it. The increasing the balance, changing the balance of in-person and virtual to try to push more people into face-to-face. 99% of our district goes face-to-face for all or almost, almost all the day. That's expected. We are big enough that we can take care of the 1% of people who don't. We all got, we all got the emails with some very, very moving stories about special circumstances and special reasons, how this, how this school is the only, this, this school is the only thing keeping kids connected. Where are they going to go? Are they going to, are they going to trust the word reimagine with all, with a whole bunch of, "We're going to hear some things we might look at over the next, next year"? Or are we just going to lose them? Are they just going to disengage? Or are they going to go to a different place that isn't Green Bay that has, that has online programs? We are actually, we are actually closer to someone in a lab somewhere making a video under what's in this memo than we are, than we are now. In this memo, we have this vague, maybe some of it will be asynchronous and maybe some of it will be synchronous. I can read where the money is on that. And it's a lot cheaper if it's just all becomes, or mostly becomes asynchronous and you meet with your teacher on Friday or Tuesday and Friday. I am certainly not saying that we have to have classes run in the normal way with one teacher having three kids, because that's how many are in a grade. And I know there have been adjustments for low staffing ratios. At the same time, not, not every school, not every program has the same cost per student now. It never, never has and it, and it never will. This is a bit more expensive of a way to do things. And large buildings with more, more shared components are less expensive. That's why it averages out over, over a big district. The, to say that the, you know, I mean, yes, it's correct to say, "I'm a student at KJ Academy" or "I teach at KJ Academy" is a sense of belonging that would then change from, "I am a school, a student at blank school and take KJ Academy classes." Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we're doing. And it is crushing to those for whom this is, this is important. If there was anything in here that required you to destroy the school to allow it to happen, I think we would be in a, we would be in a different spot. But we do all these, we do, we are able to do all these things already. There are great things proposed by the administration. I just do not see and cannot support this rush to, to remove it as a school. There's just, you can do some staffing changes. The staffing model can look different. But if you don't, if you don't understand the people who desperately are looking to retain the one, for some of them, the one place that they have found a home here, to say, "Well, nope, now you're going to go because your house is there. You'll be online all day. You'll have some of the same teachers." Why do we have to do that to people? There's, there is nothing that we can't do by having KJ as a school that also has, that also would be responsible for this expanding programming. And if the, if the issue is the cost of the principal and, and a custodian for the physical location and the, the school secretary, don't think for a minute that it's not going to be at least that much administrative cost for this vastly expanded online program. You will need, you will need an administrator, regardless of what their title is. You will still need an administrator over an online program that serves what will apparently be far more students than, than KJ. To, if someone has a reason that you can tell me for why we must close the school to do the program things, then tell me because I haven't, I haven't heard it yet or I've had an answer to every one of them so far.
I appreciate what's, Andrew. I think expanding the programming expands the number of students that are able to be in it. And I appreciate the fact, especially looking at expanding the programming to possibly include high schoolers at some point, is something that I have been after. And I think, I assume some other board members have been looking at that as well of providing more opportunities for more of our students in there. I, I completely understand what you're saying with the possibility of losing that identity, but I think it actually expands it and will give more credibility to it. I think this, it's not a perfect plan, but it gives us the options. And I think one of the strengths of this district is how many different options we provide to the students. I fully understand what you're saying with, with the parts of it, of the students having to change that options, but I think this blends in well with what we're doing.
You don't understand what I'm saying because, you don't, you don't, you don't understand what I'm saying because...
Andrew, the next person to speak is James. Go ahead, James.
I have a question for Mr. Johns. To Andrew's point, when I read, under scope of programming, "All DPI required services must be taught to all enrolled students based on grade level." The question I have is, as the definition of a school, does the school have to offer those? Or can, as Andrew said, a student opt to take those electives as part of another school? So when I came to this, this is where I think I created a different opinion than Andrew in that that statement made me believe that to define a school meant that school had to provide a basic set of offerings which KJ right now does not offer if we were to try to expand into the middle and the high school levels, which would be an increase in expense because they would be duplicative of the courses that would be offered at different schools. That is really foundational to my opinion. And so I'd really like an answer to that question.
Yeah. Thank you. Calling it a school and embodying it as a school requires that it offers all of the comprehensive offerings that would be present in any other school. That doesn't mean a student couldn't be enrolled in parts A, B, C, and D at Catherine Johnson and E and F in another school. They would, they would have a dual school enrollment in that case. But as a school, it would have to offer everything. And as the school grew into its middle school years, that required to offer list gets a lot bigger. And obviously, as we talk about high school and what we want available to our students, I don't think anyone has a mind of calling KJ a high school because that, of course, gets, gets huge. But currently, as it is right now, calling it a K8 school requires us to offer the full comprehensive schedule of programming.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then, and then Andrew.
Okay. This, this whole conversation about whether or not to close this school was, was part of the larger context of cost savings. So, and then it veered off to now talking about the value proposition of KJ Academy. So if, if we do, if we do what it is that, that we're voting on, if we vote in the affirmative to this proposal, my question is, where, where are the cost savings with this as compared to closing it? It's, and I'm, I don't know that I see that in here. Or did we stop talking about KJ Academy as a cost savings initiative? And now we're talking about cost effectiveness of the school, which is a different subject. So this is where my confusion is in, in voting on this at this point in time. This started as one of a list of things that we were going to do to close the budget deficit. So if we're not going to do that, then, then the question, the other question is, where will we now look to save the dollars that we had associated and attributed to full closure or closure of KJ Academy?
So the motion in front of you still leaves KJ open as a K8 school for an additional year. So obviously, there's no short-term cost savings associated with that. The, the value of virtual programming and the, and the cost of virtual programming, as many on the Board have said, there's a desire for expanding it into high school spaces where more students can take virtual courses, either two or three here, one here, a couple in the summer. Right now, in our budget reality, the opportunity to move into expanding program there is one that we have to look at our K8 virtual programming and explore options for, you know, really the shift from calling it a school to becoming a program. There's no, there's no dollar amount right now that I will put, what is it? What are we saving by moving KJ from our school to a program? Calling it a program certainly opens it up to more participation, opportunities for homeschool families to enroll, although they still could. I want to be clear on that. Homeschool families can still enroll in KJ for up to two courses. Being an opportunity for our students to experience learning in a different way where maybe in person they've been struggling, that's the cost of failure. That's the cost of not passing the class the first time and then coming back for it again in person and not passing it again. And so the, the strategy behind this is to create different ways for our students to experience coursework so they're successful the first time and not remediating and spending the extra cost on extra courses. So this is, this is about how we find value in virtual programming and address other areas of interest that I don't disagree with. And that is expanding it to larger populations so more students can participate. We certainly don't have a pool of money available to us to start simultaneously doing that high school build-out while also maintaining a K8 school based on the enrollment numbers.
Just one point of clarification then. So then I take that as a yes, this comes off of the list of cost savings initiatives and then moves to a discussion of cost effectiveness. That's what we're voting on here today, to remove KJ Academy as one of the listed items that we were going to consider for cost savings. Okay. So we're all on the same sheet of music here.
Okay. Lynn, then Andrew.
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Andrew?
So once, once again, I would go to Brian's point. Why? Why, why can't someone take that high school course that we're gonna build online? Why can't that be from, from KJ, but I'm taking it as a West student? Wha- what's the difference?
Thank you. Currently KJ is only up into the eighth grade, so we would need to expand it to 12th. But by expanding it, as David had mentioned, the requirements of a school are pretty intense versus a program.
Okay. So why, why couldn't you, why couldn't that be a, that could still, I still don't see why that couldn't be a class run through under the KJ umbrella without getting rid of it as a, a school. You don't have to get rid, I don't see why you'd have to get rid of the, the K, um, you know, the K five or the K eight to, to do this. I, what I would envision being is a, a small school that's also a program. Right? I get, I get the, I get the program part. I get the, I get the benefits of it and fine, it wouldn't be a KJ, K twelve school because we're not prepared to do K twelve that way. And actually we have, we have some things we can do with Dewey, I believe, to get online or a largely online component for, for six, 12. Six, 12 anyways, this. And, and we're not, and, and now we're not saving any money. So.
James?
I'd like to ask a couple more questions and there, if you don't feel comfortable answering them, that's fine. You can, uh, opt to pass. But as you've looked at the, the KJ model and how we run it now, um, do you feel like it is successful in converting or offering a program that homeschooled kids or parents of homeschool kids appreciate and accommodate their, um, their needs? Looking at the conversion ratio and u- understanding how many students that were not enrolled in our, um, schools, but are enrolled in KJ?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, the team at KJ does an excellent job capturing narratives when families move in and when they leave as well. And so, um, we've, we've got data. What I, what I couldn't tell you right now is the plus and minus of all the data, um, but we certainly know that KJ, um, is appreciated by homeschool families that sometimes start it for a couple of classes and then actually choose to enroll full-time. Um, we also know the reverses too. We know that, um, homeschool families also have a, a rhythm to their day that is different than the scheduled, uh, course meetings of KJ. And so some of the narrative of the families who leave is that, you know, it didn't, it didn't meet our needs and they, and they tried it. But what I, what I don't know, uh, Mr. Lierley is the plus or minus of how many are in one camp versus how many are in another.
Can you, um, Brian?
Uh, it had been mentioned staffing, um, and just for clarification, all these people at KJ are district employees employed by the Board of Education and i- if this happens, when we look at it, they would be going through the same staffing process that we would have at other schools. And there's gonna be a policy set for that, just as we do other school adjustments.
That's correct.
All right. Go ahead, James.
I apologize for coming back to it, but do you have evidence that there is a demand for this asynchronous, um, of programming at the, um, high school level that, um, originates from students not enrolled in other comprehensive high schools within the district?
I don't have the, I don't have evidence of the demand of high school age students currently in our community that are not attending our schools. We know and the board has approved through us our funding that we have committed to purchases like Edge Annuity and other things that have been used to kind of fill some gaps. Those are not, but that's not by any means intended to be a, a comprehensive GBAPs high school course experience. And so as we look at, um, cost efficiencies that would come from this, it would also be to look at some of those things that we're using as a stopgap that we would no longer use because students would be experiencing our coursework. But in terms of, of potentially eligible students to take high school virtual coursework, I, I don't, I'm not aware of that, who aren't currently in our district. We certainly know what the Edge Annuity rates are.
All right. Anybody?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm going to move an amendment and I just emailed it to Kinsey. I move that we, and the, the change is only in the first sentence. By striking the words "close as a school" and replacing that with the words "transition to a program." So it would be that KJ Academy transition to a program beginning with the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, et cetera. So that's, that's my motion for the amendment.
Can you, um, can you offer some, um?
Second.
Thank you. Can you offer some explanation for what you, your purpose?
Sure. I, I think there's, um, I, I think we're very early in this still to determine that the, that the entirety of the school program, uh, the school function has to go. I think it, there might be a place for it to still be there for certain grades or at least to study further. And at those, at the same time, uh, I think this, this allows for a little bit more flexibility as we see what's, see what develops. And I think there's at least the, the possibility that it could meet the sense of belonging needs better for those who might be getting all of their, all of their school experience this way, that small number. And it also acknowledges that, um, it would, it would transition to a program. I think it, it'll, it takes out the part of destroying the sense of belonging and it doesn't require, doesn't require us to get rid of certain parts that are working to get the other parts. We can maybe keep some parts and add new ones.
Lynn and then James.
Uh, I think I can support that. So basically we're just, it's going, it's going to say, uh, transition KJ Academy to a program beginning with the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seventh school year. Correct?
Yep.
While using the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year to reimagine the school as a virtual program serving students across the district. KJ programming would commence in the fall of twenty-twenty-six, offering a full-time option to any student enrolled at the end of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year in KJ Academy. That's the entirety of it. I, I guess I could support that.
James?
I'd like to offer a friendly to include the word expanded in front of program.
Uh, sure. To an expanded program, an expanded program.
Okay. Do we have to? All right. Go ahead, Brian.
Do you see any, I don't want to say negative impact on that. Does that still allow the flexibility for leadership to look into it with the intent of the board on that?
I think it states what we were intending to do and I appreciate the language of transition. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak to Andrew's amendment? All right, then we'll go ahead and vote on the amendment. Which, whichever way works best for you. Gerlach?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lierley?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment passes and now we're going to vote on the motion as amended. Are we ready for that? Okay. Kinsey? I'm sorry?
It's gonna paste it in.
Okay, all right. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Becker, no. McCoy, yes. Lierley, yes. Mills, yes. Gerlach, yes. Crossen, yes. Lee, yes. The motion carries six to one. Okay. All right, that concludes our special board meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. We're gonna go immediately into our next meeting. Thank you, David. Um, all right. I'd like to welcome you all then to our, um, Board of Education work session for April fourteenth, um, twenty-twenty-five and let me get into the right meeting here. We're gonna start with a roll call. Kinsey? Lee?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Gerlach?
Yeah.
Mills?
Here.
Lierley?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the, the next item on our agenda is open forum. Is there anyone who wanted to speak? Okay. Then we're going to move on to, um, to recognition. I'm gonna read from my notes. I'm sorry. I, I, I can't do this off the top of my head and it's a fairly emotional thing, so I wrote it down. So this is the hard part of being an elected official. You serve at the pleasure of the voters. Every April election, we get a reminder of this. Also, let's be real, it's not really, um, easy to serve on school boards these days. Tonight, we are saying goodbye to two dedicated school board members and two dedicated public servants. First, I want to take a moment to give a heartfelt thank you to Brian Mills for his work on the school board over the past three years. Brian, your dedication to our de- your determined belief that every child should have access to a quality education really shines through. And it's so clear how much you genuinely care about making a positive impact. We've seen how you've advocated for our students and staff and that really resonated during your time on the board. Your contributions will leave a lasting mark on our schools. We are very grateful for your service. So, in honor of your last meeting, I had AI because I have no talent for poetry. I had AI, um, make you a haiku. Brian has, I trusted AI. Okay. Brian has often blessed us with haikus over the years. Um, he's the only person I know who can do that. I'm sure there's other people, but, but he has brought that. So this is what AI came up with. In meetings we sit, budget talks and dad jokes fly. Laughter saves the day. And now, um, others can speak or Brian, I, I will leave it up to anybody else. Okay, go ahead.
I know how to work the mic now, so I'm very happy after three years figuring out to press the button. I didn't wear my East sweatshirt because I love this district and my kids go there. I wore it so my face turned bright red about reading a haiku. It would match well. I have thoroughly enjoyed being on this board and through the last three years, there's been times where we may not have all agreed on on certain things with the board, but I truly believe that this district advocates for public education for every kid. And throughout my career, I've worked on that and I hope through my time on this board I have. Public schools are what equalizes every student in this country. Regardless of all of the issues that are being brought up on a federal level or a state level, public, public schools are the equalizer here. And as the fourth largest district in the state, we are the gorilla in the county. We are the largest voice in this area that can continue to advocate for that. And I just want to thank the fellow board members, the two new board members that are here that are coming up and hope that you continue to remember that, that this board influences more than just the students in Green Bay. We influence the positions within Northeast Wisconsin and throughout the state. So I hope you continue to advocate for that and I've thoroughly enjoyed being on this board. So thank you, everyone.
There are gifts involved? We, we will be taking pictures. Should we do them all at the end? Okay, all right. We're not finished. Rick. This, this one's gonna be really hard too. I also want to honor and recognize Rick for his dedicated year of service on the school board. Rick, you've been more than a board member. You have been a steadfast advocate for our students. I have never I've seen anyone has such a strong impact in such a short period of time. And I've admired your commitment to bridging, bridging gaps and fostering community involvement. Thank you for your devotion to our schools and for the positive impact you've made. You are tru- we are truly grateful for your service and I hope to see you continue. And I actually have no doubt that this is gonna happen. Continue to be an influential part of our community. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak. I just want to give a coup, please.
Rick, I remember meeting you, um, at the end of a public session and having the opportunity to talk to you after. And you stepped up to help this district when we needed you. So you have done an amazing job and I appreciate working with you and hope you continue to serve our community in some way. You have stepped up and I appreciate it.
Cool.
Rick, I, I, I want to thank you and, uh, you know, all those times that we, we had the opportunity to work together uh, as partner on the operation side of the, um, district when we present here. Uh, those are very, um, educational time for me as well because I, it's an honor to be in your presence. You know, in my community, we always talk about the elder, about my elders who fought in the war and, and we are connected in some ways in that sense because of your background. And I want to tell you thank you. I remember the first night I met you at the, uh, CISA, um, uh, meeting that we went to and, you know, I, coincidentally, we sat next to each other and, and we kind of introduced ourselves and I thought to myself, wow, what, what a guy. And, and that, that is true. All the, all this, this entire year that we worked together, you were nothing short of what my expectations are. All the, all this, this entire year that we worked together, uh, you were nothing short of what my expectations are. And my friend, I hope that we could continue this relationship even though, uh, the results of the elections a little bit disappointing, but I know that this is not the end all. I think it's just a little setback and, and I think that we're gonna see you again. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? You don't have to speak, Rick, if you don't want to. Okay.
You know me, I will speak.
Okay.
First, thank each and every one of you. I, I think back a little more than a year ago, a year and one month, when I stood at that podium and addressed this board and offered my services. I was sincere about that, and that continues on. I, I don't know how to do anything other than full in, full onboard, full commitment, uh, because the stakes are so high, our kids. That remains my commitment. I, and, and what I said a little over a year ago still stands. I still offer my, my, my services to this board, to the school district, to all of the administrators, uh, to the teachers, to our kids. That's what it's all about. Um, I had a mantra, and feel free to use it, that I'm, I had intended to use, and it should be very appropriate for our kids. We should be always telling our kids, yes, you can, yes, you will. That has implications that are so profound in this world of ours. It gives them support, lets them know we've got their back, but it also says that this is their education on it and they should take ownership of it, and we expect them to take ownership and move themselves forward in any part of this educational journey that they are on. There is nothing that can replace public schools. There is nothing. So even just that alone makes it an imperative to get this right. It's easy to cast aspersions on, if, if you're looking to feel better than something else, to give yourself some personal status, it's easy to pick on public schools, but I challenge you to say, what have you done to make it better? What are you doing to, to eliminate any negativity that is out there about any public school, especially Green Bay? To, to change the paradigm of negative perception. This is a wonderful, wonderful school district. Great things going. If, the things that we're talking about, uh, there's other schools that are just now embarking on this journey that we are already on. We're well down the road of becoming the model school district for not only this state, but for this country. That's how big the thinking has to be at this, around this table. Because we are the ones setting the agenda for what this, the future looks like. Nothing short of that. So I thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my hand is still raised to say, if you got a special project or anything, pick me, I'm here. No time's a bad time. Uh, my offer to all of you who I've come to know and to work with and admire, uh, it, it knows no bounds. So thank you very much.
They need to open their gifts. Um, so, yeah, uh, yeah. So the tradition of our board is when someone, um, steps off our board for whatever reason, they get artwork from a student in our district. So, um, yeah, if you want to go ahead and there might be people in the room would like to see. There's also certificates.
Oh, okay.
Brian, I'll give you your haiku, too.
They got it, they got it, didn't they? You got it? All right, thank you.
It's important to take a moment to celebrate people's service. Like I said before, it is not easy to serve on a school board. Um, people mostly just see our meetings, but there's so much more to it and, uh, and anyone who chooses to serve in this capacity will always have my appreciation. And thanks.
I was all ready. I'm gonna speak out of turn here.
Okay.
I was all ready to make a summarial comment, like, did you have one of my kids do this? And you did.
Oh. Oh, how nice. No. One of his, one of his kids, yeah.
And I know what it is.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, well, now we do have to take pictures.
Why don't we just kind of come up here and we'll all kind of group together? We now have all our board members that want to participate. I wonder if that's one of the missing others. Actually, let's, let's kind of, let's kind of. Can you get everybody?
Yep, yep, you're good. All right. Three, two, one. Do you want to do a fun one? Three, two, one. Okay, that's not, that's not any more fun than what I was talking about. Thank you, Brian, and real quick with your photo. No, I don't want it.
Is there some way for them to know what Brian knows, who did his? Rick, find out who did his. I know it came from the Fine Arts Institute, because I saw you send it dropping off.
That's it?
No, the sticker sent it.
Yeah.
I checked. Listen to Robert's nose.
Okay. All right, we're gonna keep moving along on our agenda here. Um, the next part, uh, this is you, Brian, um, report of canvassers.
All right, we the undersigned certify that we are members of the Board of Canvassers for the City of Green Bay. Do I need to read this whole thing? Melissa? All right. Uh, we certify that the attached tabular statement of votes cast and summary statement of the Board of Canvassers canvassed and prepared by us are correct and true as compiled from the original returns made to Celestine Jeffrey's clerk. We further determine and certify that the following persons received the greatest and next to greatest for primary only votes, uh, number of votes for the respective office for which each candidate was a candidate on February eighteenth. Uh, this is documented April fourteenth, uh, April fourth, and the top, uh, in order, uh, Jeanette Knell, uh, James Lyerly, Alex Minow, Katie Gentry, Rick Crossen, and Elliot Christiansen, and it's signed by the Board of Canvassers. Um, and I think that's all that you need, correct?
Okay. I think we should, um, take a moment to recognize that the two people that will be joining our board are in our audience. If you want to just wave your hand. There you are, yeah. I just found out, I, I thought that once this meeting was over or when the new people get, um, sworn in, that that was when they were officially members of the board, but it out, I've been told by our, um, in-house counsel, Melissa, that it's actually right at the moment that they are seated at our next meeting. That is when you are officially onboard. So, um, we actually have some stuff that Rick and Brian and, and the, and the next few days are gonna have to take part of, but this is our last public board meeting that, um, that they're gonna be able to participate, and that's why we're, we're doing these recognitions tonight, so. All right. All right, so the next, the next item is, um, under education. Yep.
All right. Our last, my last hurrah. Can I have all of the members of our subcommittee, our school naming subcommittee, come to the table, please? Right.
Now, is this on your committee?
Uh, yes, it is. We've got everybody.
Excellent.
So, um, first and foremost, just, this, I'm, I'm addressing the board now as a member of the subcommittee. Proud member. Um, we had a very interesting process that we went through, both of identifying who was on our, our team. Um, we, we made a very deliberate effort, and I think a very successful effort, to get a good cross-section of our district, our community, age groups, um, perspective. And, and we challenged each other in all the right ways so that, um, what the, the, the product that you see is just that. It's the end state of a very deliberate process to come up with what we consider to be three names that are very appropriate for consideration for the board, for the selection for the new Westside Elementary School. Something that will have, uh, near-term, short-term, long-term relevance and impact to the community whenever the name is mentioned. So I want to first, um, allow each of our members to identify themselves to the, to the board members, um, who they are, where, where, what, what you do in life and where, and, 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 and all of that. Because we, we're really proud of, of who the folks that, that are here are on, and I think this is a great forum for them to introduce themselves. So if you would, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Brittany Ortiz. Um, I am a Kennedy Elementary mom. I am a mom of five, so I'm very, very invested in not only right now and what's coming up as well. So I'm super blessed to be here and thank you guys.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Melkor, Director of Elementary Schools.
Uh, good evening. I am Giovanni Vasquez. I am a Southwest High School student.
My name's, uh, Delia Martinez. I am a Kennedy student.
Oh. Had to figure out how to turn it on. Um, Melinda Eck, and I am on city council and I represent District eleven, which the new school is located in.
Hello, I am Sarah Yang. I am Isaac's mother here to help and support him because he is the, uh, guy here that is actually on the committee and I'm his support person, and I have three children in the Green Bay School District.
Hello, my name is Carrie Knitt. I'm a mom of three. I'm a MacArthur parent, and I also serve on the PTO board for MacArthur.
Hello, I'm Marie Nickel, and I am a kindergarten teacher at MacArthur. So helping out with the MacArthur voice.
Can we, did this, you want to? Just let us know your name.
I'm Isaac. And I go to MacArthur.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I'm sorry. Yeah. They already set, signed me off. If somebody had to sign me out of the building, too. Um, let's go to the third slide. It says, uh, there we go.
All right, so just a quick update. Um, if you've been around Kennedy lately, you'll see that there's some machinery getting moved in. It's starting to look like a construction site. Um, in the, in the very upcoming weeks, you'll see, um, earth being moved and the geothermal well drilling beginning as well. So, um, Kail have more updates later, but it's exciting to see, it's starting to, to see it unfold, so.
Next slide, please. Okay. We were guided by, uh, Board Policy, uh, nine forty, um, in how to name a district facility. Uh, some key things to note in here on this list that, um, we obviously had to recommend, uh, I mean, it could have been anything to, that, that was related to the school that gave the school some relevance. Um, if we named it after, uh, any person, we could only have one recommendation be of a, a deceased person's name. Uh, obviously, the person had to be in good standings, had to, when the, the name is mentioned of a person, uh, it had to evoke good morale and, 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 and all of the good things that would be attributed to a person. Um, the name of, whatever name we came up with couldn't be the same as any other, uh, named buildings or schools or anything else in the community that would give some confusion to, to that name. We were to consider nicknames, uh, things that schools can, can evolve or devolve into. I mean, we talked about KJ Academy, um, using the, utilizing the initials more than the name of the school. Um, we considered that, and you'll, you'll hear reference to that as, in, for, in particular, for one of the names. Um, if, if we came up with a name, we had to say, okay, let's give equal weight to anyone of, of equal stature for consideration of that name if, if in fact it was a person's name. So, um, and then the school, like I said, had to, or the name had to retain significance. Um, if it meant something today, will it mean the same thing fifty years from now? So, uh, you know, fading memories or something like that. So we had to really give that some serious thought. Um, and then we did research. We did research on the names of all the names that we considered. Um, and, and the three names that you see here is just the end state. Like I said, there were about probably over twenty names that we beat around, and I mean, we beat these names with, if you come up with the idea, be as tough on it as, as you would, as you are an advocate of it. Uh, because we, we, we were gonna be the ones to uncover anything and not have it be discovered after the fact. Um, and so there, that was the process. Uh, go, go to the next slide, please. So these were the dates that we met. We met a total of, uh, six times. But they had home, we had homework assignments at times. People did, went home, did some very good research uh, on, on the names to be considered. Uh, we invited some guests. We invited Mr. Lee at one point to, uh, to come talk about one name that we did consider. Um, I wanted to give an honorable mention to that, to, 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 uh, to, um, the general who, um, was, he is the equivalent of their George Washington, and, and we did give serious consideration to, to, to the, to the name. Uh, as we did with others, there were Native American considerations. There were a host of, a lot of wonderful names to consider in this. So this was not a, a cut and dry thing. We did a lot of deep research and work and consideration. And we used the democratic process to vote, um, uh, on the names. The decision matrix to give weight to, uh, turned it literally into a math equation to determine the final names and, and that came about. I'm probably getting ahead of myself on these slides. Go, go to the next slide, please. There you go. Um, we took into account the schools that, whose children are going to be joining this school. Keller, Kennedy, MacArthur, and their history. We asked kids who were going to grow up in this new school to get their thoughts on it, because now when, when they're older and they've got kids, they're saying, I, I can, I, I contributed to naming this school and I was one of the first members of this school. Relatives of the kids who were part of this were equal members of, or became equal members. I don't think that was our original intent, but it worked out beautifully because we got great insight from parents, from brothers, from a brother, to, to, to things to consider. And, and don't sell these two guys, these two young ones, short. They were powerful contributors and participants in this process. They were not passive at all. And, and their voice had equal weight of everyone else that was here. I'm getting choked up talking about you guys. All right, let's go to the next slide. Now we're gonna, we're gonna go, we, each one, each per, there's a person who's going to speak to each of the three named, the three names that we're considering. Who's got the, who's got Bart Starr? All right, go for it.
Naming the newest Westside School Elementary after Bart Starr would not only honor a Green Bay Packers icon that is known for his character and leadership on and off the field, but it also set an example of a standard of excellence of the school and its students that, to emulate.
Next slide.
Bart Starr was the Green Bay Packers quarterback who led the team to five NFL championships and the first two Super Bowls. Starr was praised for his leadership qualities and exemplary character, both as a player and a person. Starr maintained ties to the Green Bay after his playing days, co-founding the Rawhide Youth Services, a program that supports at-risk and troubled youth. The name Bart Starr would provide inspiration to students, staff, and the community. Similar in reasoning to nearby Vince Lombardi Middle School, Bart Starr Elementary School would immediately evoke a sense of school spirit, achievement, consistency, leadership, and pride.
As far as retention goes, we thought as a committee, as long as the Packers remain in the Green Bay area as a Green Bay team, the name Bart Starr would not fade from any memory or relevance. Potential controversy with the name, the initials BS could be used as a pejorative when abbreviating. That was something that came up in our discussions. Potential misspelling of the last name Starr because it has a double R to it. The Walnut Street Bridge is also known as Bart Starr Memorial Bridge. We may need to seek permission from the Starr Estate if this name were chosen. And then as far as controversies surrounding Bart Starr's severe back injury from a hazing incident was something that came up in our research and that he concealed his elopement and marriage not to jeopardize his college football career. And last but not least, not everyone in the area is a Packers fan.
And then, has someone actually proven that last statement?
I, it's, online, there's, there's comments.
Yeah, I, I, I'm skeptical about that last one.
And then some alternative names that we came up with, kind of related to this name, would be just Starr Elementary to include tribute to both Bart Starr and his wife Cherry Starr, who was a big member of the community as well. And then Starr Elementary with just one R, just a refocused name referring to children reaching for the stars was also talked about.
All right, our next school name proposed.
So the rationale we came up with for Bright Horizons Elementary is that Bright Horizon symbolizes a future full of promise and opportunity. It conveys the idea that education opens up a world of potential for students and helping them reach for the best possible future. A bright horizon evokes the idea of something beautiful and achievable in the distance, which can inspire both students and educators. And then our research, one of the many goals of education, particularly with a focus on student agency, is to empower students to take control of their learning and become active participants in their educational journeys. And as far as significance, Bright Horizon is a spirit of potential and as the school begins their journey with a portrait of a graduate, student agency and belief in themselves is the core behind those five areas. Academic achievers, communicators and connectors, personal architects, leaders and teammates, and empowered navigators.
Okay, and then for retention? Oh, sorry.
We'll slowly start to master this. So as far as retention goes, Bright Horizons holds significant potential as a school name, particularly if it aligns with a forward-looking vision and focus on developing students, their future successes, successes, holy crap. It offers positive, optimistic imagery and flexibility that can remain relevant over time. Our controversies really aren't that big, but Bright Horizons may feel less appropriate for older students. And the name Bright Horizons could potentially be seen as overly idealistic or disconnected from the real challenges students face. Bright beginnings, obviously, the local childcare saw a lot of that in the Facebook comments. Various Bright Horizons in Southern Wisconsin, so all those fun. And then for the alternate names, we have Horizon Elementary, which would still capture the essence of Bright Horizons, just without including the word bright, so.
Okay, and the next, the next, the third choice is Creekside Elementary. Our rationale was that the Beaver Dam Creek runs through the new Westside Elementary School's property. Research, Beaver Dam Creek is a small, shallow stream originating by Southwest High School and it meanders its way north, four miles, to eventually drain into the Duck Creek near Velp Avenue. The stream carries a considerable sediment load and substrate is made up of gravel, cobble, and some soft sediments. It is located in the Duck Creek watershed. The significance is, again, Beaver Dam Creek runs alongside the school grounds. It's from, it's on the, the south side, running from west to east, and then it curves around and heads north. So it, it's on really two sides of the property. I added that in there. However, there is a Beaver Dam Creek, or Beaver Dam Park down the road, so shortening the name to Creekside keeps from causing any confusion.
Okay. As far as retention, according to the online resources, data on the creek marks as far back as 1978. So it's been around for a long time. There's no evidence that it will dry up anytime soon. Based on the data, the meaning behind the name will hold long into the future. Potential controversy, there's another local school named Creekside. And then alternate names, Creeks, or Creekview Elementary, so it'd still capture the essence of Creekside without creating a conflict.
So these are the three options. You really have more than three contained within that because we did present and, and offered some alternative names, derivatives, slightly different, but still capturing the essence of those, of those three primary names. Does anybody have anything else to, to add before we turn it over question and answer? Yes, Melinda?
Well, I did want to clarify because, you know, we talked about Bart Starr with the hazing incident. He was being hazed, he was not hazing someone else. I just thought that was important because, you know, it would look really bad if he was the one hazing, but he got hurt during that incident of being hazed.
That is true. He, he was being hazed, he had a, an injury and, and his story was that he, that he told his coaches was that he hurt it during kicking practice and not during some sort of a hazing ritual that he was, went through. Okay, so turning it over to members of the board for a question and answer.
Anybody? Go ahead, Brian.
This isn't necessarily a question for the group, but I, just a personal preference on this because it's what we do at our work session. I think the Starr Elementary with two Rs is a winner. Bart Starr and his wife have contributed so much to this area and his dedication to helping troubled youth and students make positive choices, I think, is something that this district continues to build on. I think it's a fantastic option. So I think they're all good choices, but I think Starr is, is the. But I don't have a vote anymore, so you know.
Lynn and then Andrew.
I absolutely support Bart Starr Elementary School. It's not just because I remember Super Bowl I and Super Bowl II. I do. And I do remember Bart Starr being the quarterback. We were watching on a very small black and white TV, but I remember it. In all those years, I have never heard BS associated with his name. I'm not worried about that. I was at the dedication of the Bart Starr Memorial Bridge and Cherry Starr was here to dedicate that bridge and I don't see any kind of conflict with that. There's, I mean, there's just nothing wrong with having a bridge and a school named for Bart Starr. The fact that he eloped so that he wouldn't lose his football scholarship doesn't bother me a bit. There are much worse things people do behind the scenes with people they love that, yeah. The fact that he stayed married to her until the day that he died, she stayed true to him and she died very recently. Together, they co-founded Rawhide Boys Ranch in 1965. I remember that also. It's not for boys, just boys now, it's for boys and girls. They still, it still serves 750 kids every year. And, you know, he stayed with it until he died. In 1971, he helped start the Vince Lombardi Cancer Foundation and the Starr Children's Fund. I do not support calling it Starr Elementary. I don't support calling it Bart and Cherry Starr Elementary. I support calling it Bart Starr Elementary. Seventy-five percent of our schools are named for a hero and I think there's a reason for that. I would not support Bright Horizons. All you have to do is Google it and the first thing that comes up is that huge Bright Horizons company that has daycare centers in 40 states. As soon as someone said Bright Horizons to me, that's the first thing I thought of. So I definitely support Bart Starr Elementary School.
Thank you. Very good suggestions by the committee and thank you for your work on this. I'm surprised, and I would like us to revisit the idea that the committee must give three names and only one can be a person. It seems odd because elementary schools are in Green Bay are named after people almost exclusively, I think exclusively. And other, you know, high school, high schools are, high schools are generally been named geographically or differently. So to put the one-size-fits-all there, I think, I think Bart Starr or, or Starr with two Rs are good choices. Bright Horizon, there are not only, not only are there a whole lot of them, but of the whole lot of them that are out there, there are some of them who have gotten in some very serious trouble and not just in the US, but in the, the Google search for that is, is not good. And Creekside, I think you look at the Creekside or Creekview, just that another school district nearby has, has one. It's, it's a good choice because there's a creek there, certainly, but other, but it, it does, it would match the name of another one. So I would lean towards Bart Starr.
A little synopsis on Creekside made me go to Google Maps and try to trace that creek from its beginning to all the way to where it, it ends. I, well, let's say I learned a few things that I didn't know before. Anybody else? Brian and then Koo.
First of all, I think you guys did a really good job on, on these names and, and I want to thank every one of you that gave me the opportunity to come out and, and express a little bit of what, you know, to represent my community and so forth. You know, I, I'm, I'm curious, too. I think all these three names are right on the money. But, you know, I, I, I think in terms like DaVinci, I think in terms of Isaac Newton, that we represent like a school that is supposed to be the beginning or, or the start of our young people's mind in terms of scholarly, in terms of academic. Like I, I wondered if that come, like, what, is there, is that a challenge with you guys as well? I, I love, I'm, I'm, I love the, the Bart Starr name as well, but I, I, I wondered that that, was that a challenge for you guys? Because, you know, I always thought that, you know, a, a sports hero or a guy that, you know, come through science or physics or mathematics, that, that's what we're supposed to aim for. And, and I, in terms of myself, I think that would be a tough challenge to kind of go back and forth and decide which one would we want, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I was gonna say, I can definitely speak to that because that was Isaac's number one pick through, like, the second half of all the meetings is Isaac Newton was his number one, so.
On to that? Yes, it was, but there was, I guess, because of, with Bart Starr, you know, talking about that in particular is, is his work with Rawhide Boys Ranch and, and it is an academic program as well. And then the added piece is, if it's, if it's shortened, it would probably be called, you know, how people, they always shorten it to the last name, Starr Elementary. So it's kind of has two, a twofold thing where you think of them as Starr students. So that was the rationale there.
Isaac, this is for you. My personal opinion, and I think a lot of people may disagree with me, but I do think that Isaac Newton is the best and smartest physicist of, for human history. So, good job.
Brian?
I, I think us embracing Green Bay and, you know, Appleton can't really name a Bart Starr Elementary School or, you know, probably, probably could, but wouldn't be as impactful with it. I have, I have a question and a comment on that. When we named Catherine Johnson, we went to the family. I assume someone has reached out to the Starr family about this possibility?
Not at this stage, no. These were just, this was the naming committee, that this, that would be a next step if in fact the, the board voted on moving forward with that.
And, and just to follow up with this, and this is something I texted to Rick and just to share this, when we were talking, he was telling me about Bart Starr and the background and I was like, I'm from Green Bay, I know this. But a little fun fact, I was born two years before the creek was discovered, which made me feel sad. And my dad used to convince my mom that my name was Brian after William Jennings Bryan, who, if you don't know who he is, don't worry, most people don't. I think that my dad had actually pulled a fast run on my mom and that I was named after Bart Starr because, Rick, what is Bart Starr's real first name?
It's Brian with a Y. Yes.
I'm really confident because there's also a bunch of kids in my school that were spelled Brian with a Y and the timing would have been right, so.
That's a, that, that was extraordinarily unexpected. All right. Anyone, anyone else want to? Thank you so much. Oh, please.
I totally wasn't gonna do this, but I have to, like, I wasn't gonna say anything at all. They said so much for me that it was not even necessarily like what I was gonna point out, but they have really great input. The Bart and Cherry Starr name, I honestly am super biased because it was a name that I brought forward. And I have to tell you guys, I am not a Green Bay Packers fan. I'm so sorry, don't hate me. I'm not from up here. The green and gold is everywhere. That's you guys' thing, I love it for you.
There's support groups for you.
I know. I'm, I'm ready, I'm on the waiting list. I'm on the waiting list, right? Anyways, the names themselves actually really stood out for me, even though I am not from up here, I'm from Florida. None of my family's from up here and none of my even ideas were to belong up here. But when I got up here, the city itself really took me in. But when I got up here, the city itself really took me in and brought me from a really bad situation and helped us get back on our feet. So just paying a, a tribute back to the city to be able to even honor the city back for everything it does already. And both of those people are beautiful people, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for sharing that, I really appreciate that. I'm not sure, oh, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, once again, just thank each and every one of you for all of the effort and time. This was all, this was always an additional thing to ask of them after school. And the commitment and the dedication was just phenomenal. And, and this is a great representation of what is going on in our community, in our city, in our school district. So, thank, thank you all. Thanks to Jess, my buddy, co, co-chairs on this. There were some names that sometimes she and I would like, like, oh, you said, well, we gotta let the process run its course. But, and it, and it did, it yielded great results, so.
Trust the process, right?
Yes.
I always love it when we have special committees like this and kids get involved, like, that's the best. Cause they will always, always surprise you. And, and, um, it's, uh, just really fun to have them on board. So, uh, thank you all so much for the hard work you did. Six meetings, I was surprised when I saw how many times you met. That, that's, that's, that's a big commitment of time, um, so thank you very much. Does anyone have anything else? All right, well, thank you. Yes. So the next step on this is that in our next meeting, um, in a couple of weeks, we will be voting on this, so. All right, we're gonna move on. I'm sorry? Okay, absolutely. All right, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Uh, the next item up is we are going to be talking about the Green Bay Area Public School District Hall of Fame. And I assume Vicki's going to be taking care of that because you're the one sitting here. Oh.
Yeah, we're gonna be joined, uh, Amy Fish and Lori Blakeslee as well. This is not an action item, but rather a kickoff of sorts and an opportunity to highlight something that's coming up to celebrate Green Bay Area Public School District. Hall of Fames are created in, uh, different organizations across the country, across the world, and their purposes are all pretty closely aligned. Honoring accomplishments, inspiring current, current students, building community pride, preserving our history and engaging alumni. This is something we've been talking about as a district level team for a couple of years now and that we really wanted to bring to the Green Bay Area Public School District. Our comprehensive high schools all have their own individual Hall of Fames, but what we're seeking is an opportunity to celebrate our district. We have amazing alumni. And we, we talk about them in scattering ways during meetings, but what we were really looking for, and we've got it now, is an opportunity to call it out and celebrate some of those wonderful people. So that's the background on it. Amy's gonna tell us about the process of putting this into action, and then Lori's gonna tell us about the upcoming induction.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity. So we, um, have a couple of different work groups that are, um, coming together to make this, um, dream, uh, a reality. Uh, one of the work groups is comprised of representation from across our high schools and, um, with Lori and I. And that work group has been doing some research and facilitated discussion around what are our, uh, what is the, um, requirements and the, um, components to the nomination form gonna look like? So we have met several times, um, to talk about, um, different, um, discussions around what, um, the word is escaping me in this moment, but, um, what do we need in order to induct folks? So, so, um, we're thinking, well, we have set forth that graduates have to be 20 years out in order to be inducted. And then we went through a process of determining what is the nomination form gonna look like. Simultaneously, we've been having conversations with our, um, Gbabs Education Foundation, who is really excited to come on our side us and, um, be a partner in this event, looking for, um, ways to, um, also fund the event with us. So, um, they will also be, um, part of the nomination, um, consideration process. So as we start collecting nominations, we have two different work groups, representing both school district employees, education foundation board members and community members that will be looking at our nominations to determine who will we be inducting into the Hall of Fame. And we really are hoping that we're gonna be inducting former Gbabs students that are really living out, yes, I can and yes, I will. We're very excited about that. And just to be clear, that we're really taking a look at, um, folks that are out in the community doing amazing things. What Vicki had said that we have in process is that we have, um, things in place where we're recognizing current students. But in this case, we're really gonna be recognizing those that are doing amazing things in their fields of work or those that have done amazing things for us in, as Gbabs.
Beth? Have you been out 20 years? Okay.
Uh, so our event, uh, we're still working on the location, but it'll be held in early October. Um, we are looking for, just gonna put out in the universe, we are looking for the education foundation for sponsors. We were interested in everything from people who may want to sponsor an award, um, to, for a specific school, to, um, sponsoring the hors d'oeuvres, um, the event in general. You know, we're, we're also, I just want to add, we're also looking at alumni who may have, currently are deceased, right? So we do have one famous Curly Lambo who, um, was an alumni of ours. And so there, and there are many others. And so, um, very exciting event. I also wanted to add on that we are, tomorrow, we start our, uh, marketing campaign to get out the nominations. There will be Facebook, Instagram ads across the state of Wisconsin, um, although we know we have alumni scattered throughout the world. We'll be doing some ads in the Press Gazette with the idea of trying to catch folks, um, who may not follow us on social media. A press release goes out tomorrow morning. So again, if there's other ways in which, uh, people can think of that we should try to get the word out, um, appreciate anybody tapping me to let me know.
Laura?
Was there any consideration given to having more than one nomination in a year? Or is it only gonna be one person each year? I mean, one, one person in, in Shrine, what's? Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, no, um, we would like representation from all of our high schools to be inducted.
I mean, I'm, I'm talking about each year.
Yes.
Would you, would you have more? Oh, so for, for, it'll be more than one? That's all I need, that's all, okay, all right.
Yeah, and just, uh, again, to just reiterate, so it's 20 years out. So that means that Jade Almanoca and NEW don't qualify yet. So as we see the marketing going out, we won't really see them, they're a part of the website, but, uh, that's the reason why a lot of marketing towards, about, about those particular schools, because they don't yet qualify for having someone available, uh, eligible to participate.
Okay.
Rick?
It's friends.
Education. Now, just, that was the question I had about the schools that were not yet 20 years old. Would there be the possibility of an exception to the rule if in fact the first year that this was implemented, there was someone with, with one of those schools who was making a serious remarkable contribution and met all the other criteria? Would, would there be a consideration? Or would we be open to considering someone from those other three during that block of time between now and when they reach their 20th year?
I think we could consider it. I think this year is our first year, we'll have a lot of learning to go through, and, um, we're going to be taking a look at all the different types of nominations we get and learning after this year.
And I think just to give a sense of numbers, so we're currently working on a project to do a better job of collecting our alumni information. And just from the four, um, high schools, we have over 100,000 graduates, right? So, so when you think about just the volume of people that have walked through these doors and that, and how it goes. So I think that was why the 20 years seemed to make sense as we, um, just to try to give us a place to start because there's just so many graduates that go back so far.
Lynn?
Did, did I understand correctly that you said it's going to be one from each of the four high schools each year?
Again, this is our first learning year, but that would be our optimal goal, um, at least one.
And I would like to suggest that I think, considering that this is just the beginning and this will go on long after none of us are here at this table anymore, I think that might be a mistake because I think you might have a year when, um, there are two excellent nominations from this school and there really isn't an excellent one from that school. And you might have to take someone who's less than excellent just so you can say all the schools were represented. I think it just might make sense to just leave it wide open. And one year it might be one person, one year it might be four, another year it might be three. I, I would just suggest rethinking that.
Any other questions? Helen?
Okay, so nominations are open, the kickoff is officially right now, but, uh, the media blitz will happen tomorrow. Nominations are open, uh, until May 31st. Thank you.
Thank you, and Laura, I turn it back to you.
Next is operations, who's gonna be doing that part? Okay, Rick, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, we've got, um, four agenda items. The first one is fee schedule. Angie Roble.
Good evening, everybody. I'm joined at the table, uh, with Eric Khan. He did not join the finance department, he's just here temporarily. Although, if you're interested, Eric. So tonight, uh, this is the time of year, April, um, we come to, to the board to, um, have our proposed fees come to you. There are no changes other than the instrument fee. So there was a memo that was attached, um, to tonight's agenda. I'm just explaining the increase from $60 to $120, uh, for the school music instrumental, instrument rental fee. The reason for this increase were a couple of things. It has not been increased, um, since the early 90s. Um, and really this, uh, increase in fee won't even, um, cover all of the expense to clean and repair the instruments after, you know, after annual use. However, um, it will cover some of that cost, so, um, that is the reason for, for the increase. Just as a point of reference, um, we collect about $600,000 in, um, student fees. So that includes, um, there's a list also, um, of fees that, that are board approved, but a majority of those are student fees, just the general fee, graduation fee, the music instrument rental fee. Um, and then there are, um, a slew of others, uh, that are listed there. So, um, Eric's here, if you have any questions about that instrument rental fee or any other questions, um, about what the proposal is for '25, '26.
Lynn?
Uh, I have a question. And I certainly support this, no, no problem, I understand. But, um, for a child whose family really can't afford the, the fee, but the child wants to learn to play an instrument, maybe, I, I read this a couple of days ago, maybe it's in here. It's in here, there is, that is taken care of, right? Okay.
Yes, so in the, um, in the fee schedule, yep, so all of those asterisks, those all represent, um, the asterisks represent the fees that are not waivable, um, for, uh, those families or students that qualify for free lunch. Otherwise, the other, like, the general fee, the graduation fee and this fee included, um, they are waivable fees. So they would be waived if your family or student qualify for free lunch.
Brian? Just a question with waiver of fees. I understand the prerequisite with the, um, qualifying for free lunch. And as a, I believe we do an excellent job of reaching out to people to make sure they get the paperwork in if they, uh, qualify. But on some of these fees, is it possible if a, if a student hasn't qualified for whatever reason, whether it's not getting the paperwork in or, um, just kind of being on that borderline with it, that these are waived with, um, either support from a school counselor or someone that's kind of in the know with it? Is, are there opportunities out there that on some of these other spots, there's, there's funds available for students in need as well?
Yes, that's correct. All the above.
Any other questions? Andrew?
Was waivers, was it always only just free or was it free and reduced and it was changed at some point?
Free, and then some of these are free and reduced, so it just depends. But yes, if, if you're free, they'll get waived, reduced, it's different. So some of these are not waivable if you're reduced.
So the board had differentiated that? I just don't remember doing it, but certainly things happened in years that I wasn't on the board.
I think it's always just been free. DPI.
Okay, any other, Brian?
And when we're looking at these increases, and I, I support the increase on the band part, student fees are not gonna make or break our budget. You know, when they come in, we're not, we're not taking in $4 million in student fees on those, correct?
No, so we, so we have budgeted in this year's budget for '24, '25, we have about 600,000 budgeted for fees. That includes everything, so co-curricular admissions, um, all of these that are listed.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you. All right, next agenda item is Clean Energy Advisory Committee update.
Hello again. On April 8th, we had our monthly Clean Energy Committee, uh, meeting. It was a, um, agenda that we again focused on a, a survey that we are projecting or attempting, I should say, to get out, um, yet this school year. We are in the process of, uh, creating that, um, survey as a group and vetting that with the help of our communications director Lori Blakeslee. And then, um, if we are unable to do that, then we would look, uh, at a potential survey next school year. Purpose of this would be, um, to help raise awareness, one, for the clean energy goals, and then also, um, some guidance on what that focus should be, um, within that committee. Um, and that'll focus on students, um, and community. The other piece, um, that we spoke about, um, that's been very prevalent in our, um, agenda is the involvement of students, um, and then talking about the involvement of the Clean Energy Committee, whether that be with students or with curriculum. So with our partnership with McKinnon Street, we will soon have a dashboard, to show some of the, the strides we've made, um, as a district in clean energy and energy efficiency. So that again was a, a topic of that agenda. With that, I'll take any questions.
James?
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Cal. I need to have you help me reconcile the questionnaire. Thank you, it's December, if I remember correctly, the committee made their kind of report and recommendations. How does the questionnaire kind of asking for what should the committee focus on fit within the plan that, oh, that was a multi-year plan, kind of, you know, set of directives that came out of that committee? How, how does this fit in? I kind of feels like we're, it almost felt like we stepped back. I kind of feels like we're, it almost felt like we stepped back a moment and helped me understand that, please.
I would say, so this is going beyond what our, the recommendation that we had made to the board with that Clean Energy Goal. So that will be at the forefront. Obviously, our goal is to meet that, that those markers of the 50%, 75% and 100%. And that's the work we're doing in partnership with McKinstry as far as developing electric, electrification roadmap. I always get stumble on that, as well as other goals to help get towards that goal. What came out of that and also was in the recommendation to the board was focus on other areas, waste reduction, things like that. So this would be work adjacent to that committee work.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. All right. I think you're still referendum update, Kale.
Right. So as part of our monthly referendum update, again, we have updates for the, still the 22 referendum and then obviously our ongoing 24 referendum. Oh, no. No. Thought we had this figured out. There we go. It buzzed. Can you advance it? The first slide, I left this in being very empty on purpose, just to kind of show the progress we've made here. So this is the last project on the 22 referendum list that was planned. That's the ASB addition. We are not yet complete with design. That will be done very shortly, but I wanted to keep that on here, kind of show that progress we've made. This list was, as we started these months ago, was much longer. So this is currently in design, planned to be done yet this month and then bidding out shortly after. I'm going to go next slide. Currently bidding, we have two projects out. The board, you approved two, two projects today to reduce this list, but currently we have Howe HVAC and Sullivan HVAC projects out on the street to bid right now. Those bids are due at the end of the month. So this is kind of that culmination then of where we're at with that pre-construction phase. So those are all the pre-construction phase are projects that have been awarded that will be starting this spring, summer. I've added the Franklin renovation and the Southwest renovation to that that was approved tonight. And like I said, those will kick off later this spring, early summer, mostly after school. Construction phase, West Stadium and then the speed safety signs that continue with the cities, actually the city implementing those. And, yep.
Yeah, Laura.
With the speed, the speed safety signs, do you have any feel for how close to completion they are on that?
Last I spoke to the city representation was July. I believe they, they plan on having that completed by the end of July.
Okay. And, nope, that's it. Thank you.
Andrew.
Yeah, do we have a date yet for West to be finished?
So I pulled this out to give a little information on the West's update. So we've been meeting often with that team. We have weekly meetings. Construction has resumed now that the ground is thawed. We pouring, we are planning to pour concrete yet this week. Infrastructure has gone in for the cell tower gear move. Construction will pause during the NFL draft for a few days. That's a blanket piece with cell tower providers not to interrupt activities during the draft. So just a few day delay. Construction in its entirety is scheduled to be complete by the 4th of July and they continue to work with us to make sure we can have access to our existing grandstand and all the facilities around the tower.
Did we lose out, did West lose out on, West Wolf lost out then on the spring for being able to host playoffs presumably? Or are we?
I believe those bids have to go in either a year or even more in advance. I would have to get more information on that.
More than a year in advance anyways, then I'm not, I'm not concerned. I'm, I am disappointed that people, and I realize it's not us, but I, I bet if, I wonder sometimes if things get taken care of quicker in certain places than others. And I'll just leave it there.
Brian.
This is kind of related to what Andrew is saying. Our district has been fortunate to host regional events for different activities. I know that for boys' basketball, they held a pretty big game at Southwest with it. I hope that these referendum improvements through all four of our school or traditional high schools, open up that opportunity that we aggressively pursue them so we can show what we've done here, whether it's softball tournaments or, you know, the events utilizing the track and field or the basketball courts and the gymnasiums, that we actively recruit these. And I don't know what the process is for that, but Andrew, I agree with you. I, I would hope that we can utilize this for all our schools, especially West being listed as, you know, one of the premier stadiums once this is done. So I think we need to actively do that. I don't know how, but I hope we can.
Lynn.
My question is from the previous slide, but you don't have to go back. I've been wanting to ask you this for months. Kale, what in a school is a chiller?
Essentially the part of the HVAC unit that's going to allow air conditioning. So condensing, creating cold, yeah. Yep. So allowing us to have air conditioning in our, in our schools.
Anyone else? I didn't hear bubbler until I moved here to Wisconsin. All right. That's it, unless you got anything else, Kale?
Yep. We just have the 24 referendum. So a few things, we had brought Washington Middle School award last update. This update, I will be bringing the West Side Elementary remaining bid packages to notify you that construction as noted. We have excavation beginning on site and then soon to follow the geothermal well drilling to begin that process. The new elementary, so we had previously awarded the geothermal. We bid out the remaining 29 work scopes with our partner at Nexus. Total bids awarded were just under 42 million. We received excellent bid coverage, over 112 bids. Depending how you look at it, a few of them were combined, so that's why I kept it down to 112, but it was actually a few more if you look at combined bids. So great bid coverage, great contractors and Nexus is working on vetting those scopes and awarding those, those bids.
Brian.
If you don't feel comfortable answering this, that's understandable. Has our partnership with Nexus increased the amount of bids that we've received compared to past referendums? Has it been helpful in streamlining and just making this process a little smoother, especially with the new construction?
I wouldn't want to compare it to another project. What I can say is our, our bid coverage has been more at or above what, what we anticipated. As a, I guess for myself, point of reference, I've seen great turnout. Nexus has solicited well for us. We have had no hesitation to bid and getting every package that we've put out in the streets so far to get coverage that we felt was aggressive and productive for the district. So yes, very, very happy with the turnout so far. And then just to, to get this out there, you should, we will be seeing dates out there. We will be holding information sessions at Doty and Chapel to present some final renderings and design for those two schools. We're getting very close. Doty will be being bid out first, Chapel following right after that as well. Those dates, I believe the 28th is, shoot, I just saw the dates. I think it's the 29th for Doty and the first for Chapel. But that will be public out this week and look forward. Hopefully we get a good showing at both of those. Any other questions?
All right. Next agenda item, Department of Technology update.
Throughout the year, we've been bringing different departments forward to share some of the work that's been going on this school year and then projecting out into the future. So tonight we have Amy Jaikel and her team of one tonight.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good evening, I should say. I'm Amy Jaikel, the Executive Director of Technology, and I'm joined today with Nick Marilla, who leads our Information Systems Team. So I wanted to start out just by telling you a little bit about our department. Then we'll highlight some of our big projects and leave some time for questions at the end. However, feel free to ask questions during, during the presentation. So we are one department made up of four teams. Nick leads our Information Systems Team, as I stated before, and is responsible for all of the information and data that flows throughout our, our district, along with other things. Our operations team is primarily responsible for a lot of the hardware that we have within our district, getting it out, getting it deployed and answering questions about that hardware. For example, our help desk. Our infrastructure team is primarily responsible for all of the things that are in the walls and floating throughout the air to make things work. And then of course, we have our administration team. So we work very hard every day to support the district critical priorities. We see ourselves as kind of that underlying support to the pillars that support our, our students. At the beginning of the year, we outlined a few different focus areas, which you can read up on the screen, to specifically support those critical priorities. So that today is what I would like to focus on with our time here at the table. So with an equitable instruction, we brought to the board table in February a purchase request for student Chromebooks. So again, our student Chromebook refresh takes place on a yearly basis. This is our second year of that refresh, where students in first, sixth and ninth grade get devices and they carry them through to the next refresh cycle. So first grader would get a device, carry it to sixth grade, so on and so forth. And then this year, we are also refreshing our para-professional devices will also receive new Chromebooks, which we are excited about. And all of these devices that we get, I'd like to just call out that they are fully supported and empowered in the classroom by our teaching and learning teams. So behind me, there are a few library media specialists and technology integrators that are not aware of what is happening today up here, but they're here and they support the learning of our students with their computers, the staff members with their devices, as well as teaching the responsible use of set equipment. So up on the screen, you see an image of a librarian trying to help inform her students on which is the best way to walk down a hallway with a, with a computer. One of the things that we have been working on, not only getting a refresh cycle for the devices that our students use, but a refresh cycle for the classroom displays. We aim for around three buildings every year to refresh. This year, we were ahead of schedule and we were able to refresh three buildings. And then with some strategic purchases, we had enough funds to refresh another two. So we have two buildings in process and then three on the radar for possible completion yet this school year. In total, this would be around 455 classrooms impacted, which is a big lift and we could not have done this if it weren't for the help of our facilities department. They helped us not only get electrical behind the TVs, right? We used to have projection systems, so the electricals in the ceiling, so we had to move electrical. Our telecommunications team was great in helping us get data where we needed data to be. And then our team came together to help get displays into classrooms whenever students were not in buildings. Staff members that may have been working also were fantastic in opening their rooms up to us to get these displays in. And this is part of our prebble refresh, which you could imagine was a big lift, but a successful one. Again, the refresh you see here in the background would not be possible if it weren't for our technology integrators and our library media specialists who are supporting our classroom teachers in learning how to use these items. And they also help us lead, lead trainings. Okay, I'm going to pass off the microphone, Nick, if you hit the speaker.
Certainly. I was just marveling at the scope of this thing here. Go ahead, Brian.
And I just wanted to ask this before we moved on with it. We're a huge district. When I started in the district, we had chalkboards. When I left, we had chalkboards. And how would you feel as far as comparing to other districts? Have, have we continued to make an investment as a board and as a district to really move forward? Would you compare us on par with other districts as far as our technology that we're utilizing? I'm thinking of the screens, the smart boards, well, not smart boards anymore, but the different displays. Are we making pretty good progress with that?
I think so. We're on an eight-year refresh cycle. Most districts, I believe, I don't want to say most, some districts that I'm aware of, they fund displays through additional funding, right? So referendum funding, whatever it may be, and they're small enough that they can just do the whole district. So I think the fact that we have this built into an eight-year refresh cycle, we have a game plan going forward, that's impressive. And then again, that collaboration that we have with our facilities team has saved us money on install costs. So that has allowed us to move forward. This year, we spent a lot of time looking at what we do put up on the classroom walls, which are what you see in here. And we found that if we tweaked things a little bit, right? We got rid of the soundbar that we used to put in classrooms. TVs are loud enough. We changed our mount and we, what we found is by making some tweaks to the components that we had, we could lower prices elsewhere to shift in different technologies remaining within the same cost. So going forward, all of our classrooms will have 86-inch touchscreen displays, which every teacher always wants a smart panel, right? So it's not a smart panel, it's a different, different brand, but it allows for touch and we're able to get a mount that you can put the display on the mount and then a teacher or a student with a touch of one finger can move that mount up or down. So if I am five feet, I need to lower that board to interact. I'm six feet, I can raise it up. If I have carpet time, I can bring the board down. We're back in our desks. I can bring the board up, so I'm not seeing back of heads. And it also allows if we have students in wheelchairs or whatever it might be, to get that display where they can, they can interact with. So I'd like to think we're advanced.
So a follow-up with that, and you're answering the question better than I asked the question, and I appreciate it. And that, that was my goal, is to find out that we have a plan with this where, once again, we're looking at being as fiscally responsible with it as we can be. And just to remind our group of when we brought forward, for instance, the Chromebook vote quicker so we could avoid tariffs on this, that this isn't just a, we're, we're just choosing, okay, we're going alphabetical order or whatever at the schools. We've got the eight-year plan to make sure that we do this as fiscally responsible as we can. And I appreciate that. fiscally responsible as we can, and I appreciate that.
I want to thank the board for the opportunity to, to be here tonight. I'm gonna take the next slide and talk a bit about a project that I've been really excited to work on this year. And it's through the implementation of a tool called the Infinite Campus Workflow Suite that we've been able to increase some of our efficiencies. And I think that's kind of why I wound up where I am. I, I, I get excited about how can I help people work smarter, not harder. Through the Campus Workflow Suite, we're able to do some advanced attendance and scanning functions. And that's what we've got a picture of here. So this is a very scalable solution. Kind of the, the sky is the limit, if you will, whatever you can think of. We have allowed our schools to kind of dictate the, the speed at which we roll this out and, and how they're comfortable with that. Some examples of this in action are entrance scanners at all, all of our high schools. So in the past, we used to have administrators that would be at the door, would check your ID on the way in in the morning. Now we've got scanning kiosks there, the students scan their ID and it will tell that administrator right up to the minute if that student is an active student there and if they should be let in. Administrators also have the ability to flag students, so if that student is an active student, but hey, I, I need to see Nick on the way in, they can add a flag to that student that says, hey, please see your administrator, and they can just kind of catch that student on the way into the door. We also have tardy scanners that are being used at Preble right now. So in the past, we would have these hall sweeps that would go around and write student information down on clipboards and turn that into the attendance office. Now they're actually equipped scanners where they scan that student and instead of the work of having to live, to deliver that piece of paper to the attendance office and the attendance clerical put that in, it just automatically goes into our student information system. And then what you see here is check-in, checkout. So this is at Edison. This is a solution where students who are either coming late to school or leaving early can scan their ID and enter the reason why they're coming late or leaving early. If they are coming late, it will print out a little thermal pass for you on, on a little piece of receipt paper. It'll tell the teacher what time the student checked in and what, what class they're headed to at that particular time of day based on their schedule. I'm really excited about this. As you can imagine, change is sometimes difficult and there's, some of these new features have been met with skepticism, including the deployment of this at, at Edison. But I'm happy to report that, that within about two days of using this, they reported that they were getting their students who were late to school through the door and to class faster in the morning, which was really exciting. We also have digital hall passes now at some of our schools, some of our secondary schools are using that, so it's hall passes, but it's digital. So it, it's, it's within Infinite Campus. Administrators can see who's out in the hallway at any given point in time, where they're supposed to be, how long they've been out of class and, you know, encourage them to get back to class if necessary. And then kind of one of the coolest features is absence requests. Most of these features have been very secondary centric. However, the absence request is something that's in use district-wide. And that's the ability for parents within the parent portal on their mobile app to report absences. So case in point, last night, I forgot that I scheduled an orthodontist appointment for my daughter today, several weeks ago. And she asked if I had let the school know and I'm like, oh no, I forgot. So I immediately went into the campus portal on a Sunday night. I just reported that Claire needed to leave early today for, for an orthodontist appointment. I didn't have to find the phone number, leave a message. And the beauty of this is, again, it goes right into Infinite Campus. So those attendance clerical, when they interface with that, they don't have to listen to that, that message, write it down and put it into the system, because it's in the system. And they say approve, here's the code I want to assign and process.
Do you have questions about attendance? So with this, I package all three of these questions with it. On the state report card, attendance is an issue on it. It's one of the areas that we are always trying to improve on. And I've noticed, similar to what you're saying with your daughter, at times, like we get a call saying your kid hasn't been in school for the, for whatever class period and it's, it's a user error on it. Will this upload into our DPI data as well and hopefully get cleaner information as far as our attendance rates?
That is the hope. One of the beauties of this is the, the moment that that student is marked absent, if, if a parent has done so, downloaded the app and turned on the notifications, within a minute, that notification will go to them. And, and I see that quite often, oh, my daughter's been marked absent from advisory today. Well, usually I discard that because I know that she spends a lot of time in the music department. Sometimes if they're marked absent, that's my cue to call the school and, oh yeah, I forgot to call my student in, and then I can either go into that absence processing queue. And if it's the day of, I can, I can add that request for the day, or if it's after the fact, call the school.
A, a follow-up with that is, that works well if you have the app, that works well if you're a member, that works well if, you know, we're, we're looking at some generalizations on there. So I appreciate the fact that we, we still make the phone calls on there, but hopefully this process will help clean up some of those absences that are actually there, so we're not getting, we're not getting penalized for it. And this also follows up with the student data that's recorded on there. If a student's tardy, do other people have access to that? And specifically, I'm looking as a specialized teacher who often has goals for kids, like will arrive on time and prepared. Is that information able to be pulled by teachers or does it automatically show up as a tardy on the, on Infinite Campus? So if a staff member is looking to say, okay, we've had this number of reasons, can we have our social workers use that to contact parents and say, listen, your kid's been tardy this amount of times? Who has access to that?
Certainly, yeah, that's, that's a great point, but that doesn't really tie into the, the advanced attendance at all. That is a core tool that's available through the portal to parents, so they can see that. And through the tool rights that we grant through, through Infinite Campus to our teachers. We do have custom reports that are out there and are, are able to, to be viewed by staff members based on the tool rights that are granted. One of the things that is kind of neat, that honestly, I didn't even know about until a, until one of our principals pointed out to me a, a couple of months ago, and that is with the digital hall pass piece, I, as a parent, can go in and see when my kids have requested passes. So I've got a son in eighth grade who likes to take a water fountain break at a particular time consistently. So that's been able to facilitate a conversation there.
Let James go.
Thanks for the presentation. I do have a question about the digital hall passes. I think you guys piloted this at East, if I remember correctly. And one of the characteristics of the system that I found compelling was, and correct me if I'm wrong, that two students that are not supposed to be in the hall at the same time together, you can control when people get hall passes, if I, if I remember the feature correctly. I found that compelling because it's, it can lead to better security, safer halls, when we know that two people have not been cordial to each other out there. So my question then becomes, you said some schools have this in place. What's the plan to make this a consistent program that we have in all of our middle and high schools?
Great question. And to just expand a little bit on, on what you just described, East did pilot a different third-party system called SmartPass. And we were, at, at that time, when Josh Patchick was with the district, he informed me that there were other secondary schools that were interested in maybe pursuing that. About that same time, we were made aware that Infinite Campus was developing this premium tool that fit right within Infinite Campus. The benefits of that are, SmartPass was, was very limited in that it was a, it was kind of a, a one-horse show. It could do passes, but it really couldn't push any data back into Infinite Campus. And it was limited in terms of what it had by what you were willing to share with it. So we had the opportunity to kind of review the tool. And at that time, for about the same price, we could have implemented SmartPass at just our secondary schools or purchased the Campus Workflow Suite district-wide and had a much higher, higher ceiling. The one sacrifice there were the campus tool was brand new. It's, it's just over 12 months old right now. So there's a lot of cool features there, but they are adding new features as we go. One of the features particularly that's, that's missing right now, that's been a barrier particularly for our middle schools to, to adopt, is the ability to limit student passes on a daily basis. SmartPass had that ability and right now, schools have systems, just kind of the old-fashioned paper passes, ways of limiting that. And that's been one of the hurdles particularly to get over at our middle school level. I'm hopeful that we'll see those features come and be implemented in time for next school year. We do have the, the digital hall pass in place, I will say at Preble. East, West, and Southwest wants to get it up and running yet before the end of the school year. And we also have it running at Red Smith. Middle schools, like I said, really want to take a look at it. One of the things that they have balanced as well is there have been a lot of new things within the last two years. There's been new technology resources in terms of LMSs. There have been new curriculum adoptions and with those curriculum adoptions have, have sometimes come technology pieces. So they've also wanted to be cognizant to really not overload their teachers in terms of adoption and, and having to learn new tools. So, so that's part of it as well.
Brian?
That was, that was part of my question is whether they had the attendance and the, the blocking of students. I'm familiar with SmartPass and, and it's a very effective tool for that incident avoidance, especially at a middle school level. I hope that we can use our, our economy of scale and encourage Infinitys to get that up and running because it is very, very helpful as far as teachers and also the limiting the passes is huge. So hopefully we can get that. The, the district I work in is in a, it's not an infinite campus school, so we're not familiar with, I'm not familiar using that. But if we can use our economy of scale and say, listen, we've got 18,000, 19,000 students, this would be really awesome to get that set. I think it's very efficient and effective and it's, it's pretty straightforward. I think our teachers and our support staff would be able to get that on pretty quick, so.
Just to follow up, I do want to clarify, the, the campus solution does have the, the interaction limiter. We can put the blocks on that, it's just the limiting of passes, that, that's kind of been the big thing that's missing.
It does track how many passes a student has had during the day though. So we, if you know you have a student that's had a lot of breaks, that you can still see that like you would under other programs?
Yes, there's, there's a screen or a report that you can go, you can see that the students had it. It, it's still within the teacher's control to, to look up that student and say, you know what, Nick, you, you've been out too many times today, so the answer is no. It just is lacking that automated piece to automatically count and no, no, Nick's already had three passes, he doesn't get any more today.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, we will continue on. The numbers that you see here are from last year and this year. What you're looking out up on the screen is some backend data closet stuff. We spent a lot of time last year replacing and refreshing PA systems, primarily to function with our strategic systems. We have four more buildings that remain. We also spent some time refreshing security panel upgrades, so when you go into a school, you have to disarm the school. And then I just want to call out all of the support that takes place to the things that we just expect to work. We have a team of two that focuses on our fire alarms, those security panels, med cabinets, badging into the systems, card access phones, all of those things. So that is what you are seeing on, on this screen. Kenzie, can you give me a click? Thank you. All of the things that we have out, out in our buildings are all asset tagged. So that's what, this is actually a picture of that screen beam that's sitting under the TV here, and you see the asset tag on there. Those asset tags are purposeful, they tell us when things were purchased, how often they've been worked on. And this is the first year that our teams went through a yearly, what we're now deeming yearly inventory process. And this took a lift of our entire department. We had central registration staff, our building technicians, clerical staff, everybody and anybody in our department learned how to do inventory so that they could be called on when our buildings were free of students to go in and make sure we knew where everything was, that it was in its correct place and properly keep track of the things that our, our taxpayer funded. And then with this, we refreshed our deployment team space, again, to support asset management. Okay, moving on to strategic planning. One of the things that we do on a yearly basis is cybersecurity tabletop exercises. We do two a year, this year we bumped it up to three. We, just like we practice fire drills and tornado drills, we practice what would happen if a cyber incident took place here in Green Bay. And we do that in a technical nature with our technical teams. We do it with our leadership teams, and this year, for the first time, we did it with our department. Always a, one of my favorite days, hard to find time on the calendar, but well worth it. We're working hard with David Johns and his team to work with data in a way that is visually appealing and meaningful. So Nick has led this, this work and has been recognized on a national level by Class Link and has received a Data Storyteller Award for his work that he does with real-time current data for, for our district. Yeah, it's not why he came. I don't, he, you know, I had to sneak into his office to take that picture of that trophy. For community engagement, we have had four showings of our Screenager events. And this is another thing that, this isn't a technology thing, but we have helped to lead this. So we're working with People Services, Student Services, our library media specialists again, our technology integrators. Family and community involvement has been a part, or engagement has been a part of this as well. We have shown two screenings for our secondary students, two for our elementary, our elementary communities, not students. And we have one more showing that takes to place tomorrow at the Eastside Boys and Girls Club from five to seven. Our attendance has been anywhere from 20 to 35 community members and staff members. So here are just a few photos of the event. We had a great idea from school leadership to raffle off board games. And then Amy Fish also helped us to get the donation for the board games. So so far, any student that has attended has walked away with some knowledge, some thoughts, and a board game to play with their family back at home. Okay, we'll wrap it up with just some fun facts about our department. Within the district, we have just over 2,000 access points, shy of 3,000 iPads, about 5,700 Windows-based devices, just over 18,000 Chromebooks. When I created this presentation a few weeks ago, we had, I'm gonna call it now probably 30,000 help desk tickets that come through our system. Those are just daily requests for things. We have one data center with a backup data center, 400 switches, which equates to about 21,000 ports, so anything that's connected to our, our network. We employ one student intern, we have a crossover in the summertime, so there's about a month where we have two student interns. One of our team members is a statewide cyber response member, which is fantastic. That's the, the group that if we were incident, we would call this group. And we have a member that is a part of that. We've led five statewide presentations, one national presentation. We have a member of our team that is an esports coach, which led to a D2 state championship. We have a Wisconsin CIO Orby Award winner, a National Data Storyteller Award winner. So although we are four independent teams within a department, we really do operate and see ourselves as one large family. And here are a few just more of my favorite images. Helping at the welcome back celebration, our state championship there with Southwest, I shouldn't say our, I had nothing to do with it. And then you can see some of our team members helping out at the Preble Career Fair. And this is our department. A few missing because we had to, we have to keep the welcome center open during our team meetings, but this is the majority of our department.
Laura?
How many people are on your team?
Thirty three.
And do they mostly work out of this building?
We have staff in the welcome center, our programmers. Our technicians are primarily out in buildings, five technicians. And then we have others that are always all over the place.
Okay, but your your department resides in this building?
Correct.
Right, okay, so I'm just gonna I'm just gonna note that in that sometimes our this, the work that happens in this building, very important work like that you and your crew do is minimized and not always valued. There are a lot of departments in this building, but what I look at that picture and I think that's a lot of people doing a lot of very, very important work on behalf of the district. We couldn't function without you.
And I do have to say, we prefer to be behind the scenes, right? Like then we know everything is working.
Yeah, yeah, but I just I I, you know, I just want to note that for people who think that that this building could just easily be shut down and what happens here isn't particularly important. And that in the what you just told us is absolutely critical to how we function in as a district, so.
Thank you.
That's my little rant, sorry.
Andrew?
Thank you. I I agree. There's a lot of important work done by the department. I will I will also point out that there is there are perspectives on best use of the building that don't involve saying a department isn't doing anything or anything like that. There are plenty of great IT people. I know some of them who work remote for all or part of their day, which may or may not be an option for various places, so. But I'm glad to see, glad to see everything that we're doing here.
James?
Questions for you. And so you threw a slide up there, strategic planning. So I have a question about if we have a data center here. Josh gave me the tour and everything. What's there? All right, I know that we use Google Apps in Workspace, whatever, which is all cloud based. What is run out of this data center and backed up?
Everything. Anything that we post on prem is here. All of our main servers and data equipment is is here.
Let me be more articulate, maybe. Recognizing on prim and and cloud based applications. What is the impetus? What are the impediments that keep us using on prim set systems, right? I I can't recall any of the systems that are core to classroom instruction or whatever. Being on prim, I thought like infinite campus and everything, those are all cloud based systems, right? So when we talk about our on premise data centers, is there a a thought, consideration, plan to reduce, minimize the on prim footprint and move to the cloud? And if so, is there like a timeline that you have established?
Yeah, I think if you would come tour the facility now again, you would see a reduction, especially since our work as of July one. I think the space that was originally built out could be smaller, right? We did move Class Link to the cloud, but last year or the year before? I'm sorry, you have Class Link and then Amphas Campus was two or three years ago. We do have also all of our our buildings connect back to this building via fiber, right? So every single building comes back here via that via a physical fiber. And then we have redundancy built within that as well.
Thank you, because I remember there being a lot of infrastructure components and communication components here. But from a, systems that are critical to run the classroom absent connectivity, right? We're mainly cloud based, right?
Cameras are something that I think is extremely important. That is not cloud based. I don't think phone is cloud based. Most, most of what we operate within is cloud based, security wise here, though, however.
And so I I call that out because I agree with Andrew that, you know, personnel. We've we've gone to distributed workforces and I think the district knows very well how to manage that. I think there's has to be understanding that the fiber loops and data centers are things that you don't distribute across buildings, right? And those things are are planned and may may absolutely not require the footprint that we have. But is part of the calculation when someone says, you know, suggests what to do with this building. There are critical infrastructure components that have to be considered. And when people question costs, there is a large component of costs associated with making sure that they end up in the location that is as safe, secure, redundant and connected as they are here. And there's been a significant amount of investment in this space.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, you guys are truly a center of gravity in this district of which things revolve around. So I appreciate the work and the energy and the results that you're doing here. I've this rivals large corporations in that I've been associated with. And to keep all of this running is just amazing. So thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the opposite agenda. I yield the floor.
Okay.
Andrew, you're up.
All right. Okay, we have several items under under policy and governance. First, we have one seventy one point three designated retreat sessions.
Andrew, I was waiting for you to say that my department is also a center of gravity as you were introducing these policies. But maybe, maybe it's just the technology department.
I I think that you're, I think it's great for, I think you should be able to also work from the the building if that makes sense for your workflow and to work remote if it makes sense for your workflow, too. Or to do half and half. I think it's great for you, too.
Thank you. All right. It's been a long meeting, so I thought we could use a little, a little levity. Our first policy we're bringing forward tonight is policy one seventy one point three designated retreat sessions. From time to time, WSB updates policies. They might come out with new model policies. WSB is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. We are members of their policy guide so that we don't have to monitor all the legislation coming from the state and the feds and we get these updates. They also will say, we may be lacking in this area. Here's a suggestion for a new model policy. So some of those are what you're going to be seeing tonight. This is one of those. We have a board policy that addresses our regular work sessions and our regular board meetings. And as you know, from time to time, you will go into a retreat session. And so this policy just provides further clarity to the public as to what is a retreat session? What would be, why you would need to have that retreat session and what that would look like?
All right, any, James?
Rereading this after our meeting, that launch, I apologize. But I wonder if a a statement or a clause could slash should be added to this policy. Most of all of our work sessions and our open meetings are streamed and televised and we make no guarantee or we you often have these retreats and that do not accommodate live streaming of these events. And so I don't think that we should set the expectation on that these are to be viewed remotely. I recognizing they're open meetings and you could attend, I just, I don't know if it's reasonable. But when reading it, I just kind of noticed that they are different than open sessions, work sessions in that, you know, we will not make any efforts to make sure that connectivity and and streaming is available. That's been that's been our practice to date, so.
We can certainly add that language. As you know, when I come before you, I often say not everything has to be in policy because it's more of an operational procedure that could simply be, we describe protocols and those sorts of things on the website with respect to board meetings. That could be something that we could add to the website and not add in the policy. There may be those occasions where you want to stream. I can think of during COVID. And I know it was COVID, but we did stream board retreats when for various different topics. So I I am a little bit cautious as to putting that into policy language versus putting it as more procedural information on the website.
All right, anything else on this one? All right, moving along, we have policy three forty five eleven revision.
So I'm joined at the table tonight with Cindy Olson. Cindy has not joined the legal department either as much as we would take her, but we are bringing high school grading scale, grade point average and class rank. This policy was recently brought for your approval. And we knew that as we've implemented this policy, we may need a few tweaks to the policy. This is to address Act ninety five, which requires the top five percent of a graduating high school class to be automatically admitted to the University of Wisconsin Madison, the top ten percent to all the other UW institutions. There's very limited ways in which a school district can calculate that top five and top ten percent, and it's prescribed by statute. One of the nuances we figured out this year is that there may be students who through no fault of their own or just how they came into our district and went out of our district and came back into our district. They may not have any graded credits. And they may be in that junior class and they may take one class that's graded. And they now have, and have a four point oh, we don't have weighted grade point averages. And so they would be at the top of their class and be taking one of those spots and competing with students who have taken three years of classes that factor into a graded their GPA. So we're asking to approve a tweak to the policy that would require that a student would have a number of graded credits equivalent to an eleventh grade student. So everyone's on the same playing field.
Questions?
Melissa, as I scan through this documents here, I realize that we are filtering for the top students who deserves these accolades or these scholarships. But but there's no mention with individuals who has invested the time to be in AP courses or IB courses that are much more vigorous and that they maintain that GPA. Or yet a little bit below that, is there a special curriculum or criteria for these individuals or students?
So a number of years ago, I think probably before Cindy's time, the district conducted a a committee that studied the allocate grades. And at that time, that committee decided not to do weighted grade point averages like other school districts may do for AP classes or IB classes or college credit classes. And so you're correct that a student who may take a more vigorous class schedule might not get the same kind of grades that someone who takes less vigorous. But at the same time, this is just guaranteed admission. This isn't scholarships. So this would just be for those students who are guaranteed to get into schools like UW Madison. But as we know, our universities look at the breadth of your classes that you're taking. And you may, those students are probably going to get in anyway.
It's kind of two parts and it's tied together. Do you think it's, and maybe I'm asking the board on this, do you think it's time to reinvestigate and look at the change in the grading scale or weighted grading and just that whole picture? And the reason I'm tying that into my original question is, does this policy match up with other larger, large school districts in the state? So are we, because I would imagine we're in the same situation as Appleton, Milwaukee, or St. Kenosha that just that number would be impacted by it. So does this policy kind of match up with the other, with the big five?
Well done. As far as lining up with the big five, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know if the big five do weighted grades. I do think at some point in the near future, it would be who of us to look at our grading scale. And based on recent research on the impact of how our grading scale may encourage or discourage the continuation of effort on student on a student's part. So the answer, the long answer to your short question is yes.
My question with the with the urbans or the larger school districts is, does this policy that is being presented as far as junior grade status, will this match up with other similar school districts?
Especially adding the piece about concurrent enrollments.
So I'm trying to figure out if I missed something. Because when I thought the guaranteed admission legislation was passed that it was an unweighted grade point average, did they, did they redo that?
Schools can calculate their grade point average however they want. It can be weighted, it can be unweighted. There were a lot, there was a lot of discussion about ties and how you were going to break ties. Fortunately, and I'm going to knock on fake wood because we go down to the fourth decimal point in calculating grade point averages. So we haven't run across that as an issue.
All right, moving along. So four, four sixty, so take, you take one and two together, are they the same?
Yes, so oh, yeah, four sixty, rule one pertains to the Academic Excellence Higher Education Scholarship. So this is that scholarship where, based on the size of your graduating class, I'm going to say between two and five usually, get tuition payments towards a UW school. And then the Technical Excellence Scholarship is students who go to technical school, get their tuition paid for based on a little bit, a different criteria, but along the same lines, pretty similar. Again, as we work through these and we see different nuances, we know that because of the way that the policy is written and the way that the law is written, it talks about enrollment versus how, whether you have to be a one point oh FTE. So for example, if we have students who are homeschool students and they take two classes because they're allowed to take two classes or if they're part time open enrolled in students, they are included in that calculation. So we're asking for changes that this applies to students who are one point oh FTEs in the district.
Questions? So I I have, I have one, what what would be the situation where someone might be competitive for this but be something that isn't exactly a one point oh FTE?
The example that Melissa just gave, a student could, as a homeschool student in their junior year, participate in two courses at the high school, get A's in both of those courses and then would receive that recognition not being full time enrolled in our schools.
I mean, I heard that. I get that, that one, but that's like a not even close. I meant, is there a close call or is there not really any kind of a close call? I mean, there's, is there any case where someone, I'm just making sure there's no case where there's someone who isn't
I mean, there's, is there any case where someone, I'm just making sure there's no case where there's someone who isn't, you know, getting straight A's here, but for some technicality reason, they are like a point nine with us? Or is it just, anything like that can happen or no?
No.
Okay. All right, um, other, other questions on four sixty, uh, one or two? Okay, moving forward, uh, policy five twenty-two point two, reporting employee matters to DPI for licensed employment investigations.
Um, this is one of those new policies that WSB, um, put together and issued. This policy is with respect to reporting employee matters, um, regarding license and employment investigations. We've been doing this, we follow the law. This is to provide that transparency and what that procedure is and to be a reminder to us as well as to what we need to take and what information we need to share.
Uh, questions on this? Okay, thank you. And then we have, uh, eight hundred series revisions.
The first one is policy eight twenty-three, access to public records. Our policy needs to name the local public offices within the district who are the records custodians. And as you know, we, um, have eliminated a number of administrative positions. And so then we need to change the policy to reflect what are those local public offices within the district who are the records custodians? And update that language as well as, um, we've updated just to provide better clarity for the responsibilities of those legal custodians.
Okay, any, any questions on that one? All right, go ahead.
The next revision is to policy eight twenty-four, use of electronic surveillance technology in public areas of school buildings and school district property. This policy was last revised in twenty fifteen and since that time, we have added a number of cameras and different technology, as you heard Amy talk about tonight. Also wanting to, um, recognize what would be prohibited conduct with, with respect to those cameras because we don't want people interfering with or blocking or, or, um, tampering with those cameras. That was the bulk of that and, um, those changes for policy eight twenty-four.
Right, any, uh, questions on this one? All right, thank you. And then, uh, next we have, uh, eight thirty-two.
This policy also was last revised in twenty sixteen. Um, this, the revisions were really to provide better clarity on what are those prohibited weapons and the definitions for those weapons. And we've updated the references at the end of the policy as well.
Any, uh, James?
Melissa, were you able to come up with any information about fireworks?
So James asked me about fireworks and why that wouldn't be listed as a destructive device. If you look at, um, section C, other dangerous weapons, this section talks about other items that are used as a weapon, but wouldn't necessarily be a destructive item or be considered a firearm. So this would, if, if someone used a firework as a weapon, such as shooting it at somebody, that would be included on, in this language. Things like scissors or pencils, you know, other objects that would not typically be what we would think of as weapons, if they were used as a weapon, it would fall under this policy as well.
Uh, Lynn, and then Rick?
But in section C, I didn't understand this, it said, except that such a term does not include a pocket knife with a blade of less than two and a half inches in length. So a pencil is a weapon, but a pocket knife is not.
That is a statutory difference in what, when a knife can be considered a weapon. But that doesn't mean that bringing such an object to school would not result in other violations of other board policies.
There is, there is an item that is specifically prohibited from being brought on an airliner. It's called a Kubaton, you know what that is? It's like a, it's, it's a, it looks like a little dowel, a wooden dowel that's about that far in length. And it's used to literally hit someone in the throat. Uh, it is a prohibited item on an airliner and I was noticing that there was no reference to, to that particular weapon. It is, it's a weapon, but it, and, and it's something, and my, my fear in calling it out is that, oh, can I get one of those? But it's, but the, but the thought is that it's, it's a dangerous weapon. If someone is taught how to use it effectively, it doesn't take much force to, to, to do serious injury to a child. But it, it's, it's a very innocuous looking thing. Some people use it as a keychain. But I, I would think that that should be something that should be specifically, excuse me, specifically called out as a prohibited item.
So that too would fall under section C. And the reason that it's not called out is because there's a specific statute, nine forty-eight point six one, dangerous weapons other than firearms on school premises. And that then makes reference to section nine thirty-nine point twenty-two sub-ten, which further enumerates what are dangerous weapons, and that is not enumerated in that statute either. So we refer to the statute when we call out those weapons and then section C would take care of those other items.
Well, I, a kid's not reading the policy would take, I, I just, I don't know, I just think that particular one, it's, it is a very dangerous weapon to be, I mean, if the airlines call it out as a prohibited item.
Yeah, I looked it up, Rick. I think if, um, if a school principal saw a student carrying one of those around, they would have a conversation with the student about not bringing that to school. Because it is, it would be dangerous to have that at school.
I just don't know that everybody is, is even aware of, of its danger, other than somebody with intent to do harm because of, because of the way it looks. It doesn't look, if you're not trained to know what it does and what it is, you wouldn't know that it was a dangerous tool. Someone who has it with it, would, 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 would have the knowledge of it, is what I'm saying. That's, it's, it's more for awareness than, than also prohibition. Because I don't know that a lot of teachers knew about, would know about it.
Right?
Yeah, it was kind of tied into them, Melissa, you kind of answered the question with it. Do the state statutes automatically update with what airports or, you know, I would assume airlines are going to be the, or aviation industry would be the ones that update this, so it doesn't necessarily update at that level, the state would need to update the list for its matchup?
Right, as you know, statutes are, are very rarely, uh, uh, update, updated. So for example, brass knuckles, not enumerated in this policy, right? That's very dangerous as well, would fall under C. I go back to my earlier comment, not everything can be in policy because once we start enumerating everything, then, but, so I, I think it's more about education. We have a number of different things that, things change all the time and we bring in law enforcement to give our principals education as to what you may think this looks like. It may look like it's a, a charger for your phone, but it's not. So I, I agree with you, Rick, education is probably key and so that staff and our principals know that those are prohibited devices and that it would fall under section C in the policy.
All right, anything else on this one? Okay, um, then next we have eight eighty-one point two. You have the, uh, policy and rule.
Uh, these two policies relate to our relations with booster clubs and parent organizations. Um, minor changes to update, uh, references as well as some minor language changes in the rule.
So, um, we made a, I think a policy change or a wording change in the policy. And I think in an effort to try to upload the corrected version, there are two versions of the rule and procedure and not a version of the policy attached to the agenda.
Um, if that happened, that's my fault. I might, must have sent Kinsey the wrong documents. Uh, we did make a change, um, board members, yeah, it is, Kinsey, there's just, only rules are uploaded. Oh, that's policy.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize, I looked at, I clicked on the wrong one.
So James had brought forward, um, a question with respect to the language on Title IX compliance in the policy, section four, A, regarding the district discouraging and shall not endorse the formation of organizations of booster clubs, which it, it did say predominantly serve, um, which could, you know, of the football team is predominantly males, but females are allowed to participate on football team. So we changed predominantly to exclusively.
Other, other questions? Okay, good, we're good on the policy and, um, and rule. Okay, then, um, eight eighty-two point one, police school resource officer program.
Yes, we just have, um, some minor changes with respect to the SRO, um, duties. The SRO duties match what's in the job descriptions for the SRO program, which is co-constructed between the district and the city. That job description was updated a little while ago. And so we are just updating the policy to reflect what is in that co-constructed job description.
This is a thing that I've brought up numerous times as a board member. Within my job, I work closely with school resource officers and have through my whole career. And I think the differentiation between a school resource officer and a standard police officer, traditional police officer is huge and especially in our schools. And I fully support the school resource officer program. When implemented as a school resource officer program, I'm looking at the arrest is required under D nine. And it talks about change of arrests being outside of school hours. And that continues to describe that as well as the professional development within our district strategy. I realize that one license program is stricken because I'm assuming it's just taking a broader approach than saying you have to participate in this license program. My question is, um, do we keep track of how many arrests occur during school hours and within a school? As opposed to address, I know previously we had talked about police reports and Joannys would have been listed as the closest address. That's gotta be two years ago that we were talking about that. Do we have a partnership with the police department where we see how many arrests actually happened on school grounds? Or on property that logically could be construed as school grounds? Joannys during the day, for instance, or other parks in there?
Chris Coller, the director of safety and security communicates with the police department regularly. So if anything happens on campus, he's aware and monitors.
Do we have the data though, that specifically says, okay, it's happened during school hours within it? And is it something that we would want to look into? I don't, I don't anticipate it being a huge overwhelming issue, but having that data would be beneficial to see where we can grow. I guess I'm drawing a comparison to, you know, we have the data from our badges to see where incidents happen, to see what's happening at those times, so.
Other questions? I have, I have one, why are we, why are we removing off campus if it's just to make every effort to make arrests off campus? Wouldn't we prefer them to make every effort? I mean, every, make every effort means if you can't, you can't, but we're going to try to wait?
So, so we just changed the language from off campus to outside of school hours so that if, or if the arrest is required within our four walls, that it's done within, you know, outside of those school hours and not in the presence of students and staff. And then it talks about when it is required during school hours or on school grounds due to the sus, individual being suspected of a crime or posed as, or posing as a real and imminent threat, what that applied to. We don't really have jurisdiction to say you have to do this out, off, off of campus because we don't, we don't control that. But if it's going to need to happen in our building, we would ask that it be done outside of the regular school hours.
What's, what's the difference? I mean, I'm not, I'm not really talking about the, the large second sentence. I'm talking about if an arrest is required, make every effort. So we're, it's a preference, right? Make every effort, that's a preference, it's not really very binding. But we did have this non-binding, make every effort to make arrests somewhere else. If, if you can, is implied there. I would think outside of school hours is the second best, but I think off campus is, is the best, isn't it?
Except we don't control that, we don't control those arrests. If they're not in our buildings, we don't control them off of school premises.
Okay, well, I mean, off, we say off campus, meaning not somewhere other than here. I mean, that's what, I mean, you could say that too, that's just awkward construction. If they need to make an arrest during school hours in the building, they're going to make arrests during school hours in the building, right?
That's correct.
So why do, why do we want to not have a preference that arrests happen somewhere else if you can? But we do want to say happen at this time if you can.
I'm going to have to go back to Chris Coller and ask him what the distinction was. I believe it was what I'm saying, as well as our school resource officers don't work out in the community, they work in our schools. So we wouldn't be asking our school resource officers to make arrests outside of our schools.
Okay, that I get, yeah, Brian?
And this is kind of tied into it as well, that I could see, once again, patrol officers making the arrest as opposed to our school resource officers just as a general practice because of connections established and other things that we've talked about with it before. Tied into this, um, looking at the outside of school hours, um, and I don't know if there needs to be clarification about this. Looking at, we have events outside of school hours that could result in someone being arrested as well. And I would assume that the same practice would be, if you can do it out, without a crowd of people there. If a kid gets into a fight, we know who the kid is, the school resource officer knows who it is, the administrators know who it is. And it has to be, there, there's going to be a ticket or an arrest, but the threat is imminent. That I would assume that this policy also covers that, that let the kid go home, you know where they are and you can take care of it without having a bigger issue and escalating the situation. Would, would that be covered under this policy as well? Or is there a way that can be cleaned up to include outside of school district sponsored events or something where we're looking at things that don't happen necessarily during the school day? Our traditional eight to three or whatever it is on there, or does the rest of the board anticipate that that's covered?
I think we can clarify that.
All right, um, anything else? Okay, and then, oh, yeah.
Do we have school, uh, police department officials actively participating in our de-escalation, trauma-sensitive schools and youth mental health, cultural sensitivity and/or bias training? Excellent.
That's mandatory for the SRO program.
And then we have, um, adoptions of policies and rules, uh, board of education policies, uh, revisions first and then.
I think we covered all the revisions, I think we're on to.
Adoptions.
Eight twenty-three point one, records management and retention. We're already doing this, we just didn't have a policy that reflected how we are managing and retaining our records. Uh, about two years ago, the record retention schedule was greatly changed, um, by the state. And so this policy reflects those types of record management and retention requirements.
This was one, as I was reading it, in my current situation, emails from board members. When I surrender this, do I not delete the emails? Or do I leave them in place? Because it says the board member is responsible for maintaining. So when that tenure comes to an end, who maintains those records?
So that is a great question, and I think this also piggybacks off of Amy's presentation on those data centers and why we have those data centers. As long as you are using your school board, school district issued email, we will retain those for you. But because you are, as Andrew says a lot of times, individually elected board member, if you decided to go rogue and have Gmail or Yahoo account, you as your own individually elected, and as you as a record custodian, would have to retain those records for seven years. But as long as you're using your district email, that is retained here, and our system backs up every night. Great question.
Anything else on the records management? Do they also have the legal notices?
Again, something we've been doing, but just a policy that addresses how we're publishing those legal notices and when we're required to do so.
I thought, I thought at one time we prioritized press times a little bit more for some financial reasons. Did they not keep doing that?
They publish our annual notices, so we, but they don't have the capacity to publish our Board of Education meeting notices because they, of the way that they publish their legal notices, the frequency of them.
All right, anything else? All right, then that would, that would conclude the conclude the policy section, I'll turn it back over to Laura.
All right, that completes our agenda for tonight. We're going to adjourn into closed session.
And before that, before we adjourn into closed session, there was a recent Court of Appeals ruling that talked about when you're journeying into closed sessions, to talk about purchasing and negotiations, negotiations of contract. Under the Open Meetings Law, we're required to give you a little bit of a preview, so that you know why we are asking you to go into closed session to vote on that. So Kale is going.
You need a spotlight?
No, no, no. So Kale's going to give you the preview of what that particular closed session agenda item is.
It doesn't, doesn't the?
And just tell the court decision set.
All right.
Yep. So agenda will be review of an offer for property in the Village of Bellevue. Keller Elementary School property, Frabel School of Early Learning property, and Wickwayak Elementary. Offers for each of those properties and entering into negotiation.
Lynn, you're the best.
I move that the board convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to it, negotiating with the Village of Bellevue regarding the potential acquisition and divestment of real property, negotiating with potential buyers for the sale of Keller Elementary, negotiating with potential buyers for the sale of Wickwayak Elementary, and negotiating with potential buyers for the sale of Frabel Early Learning Center, and Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1A&amp;F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for Paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit, for the purpose of holding expulsion hearings under Wisconsin Statute 120.13, 1C and E3, and Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1G, confirming with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning a strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, more specifically to it, potential litigation matters regarding the district.
I feel like I should clap, but could I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, all in favor? Oppose? Okay, we're adjourned into closed session. Thank you, everybody. I'm so sorry, hang on, guys, it's not over. Go ahead, Kinsey. Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned in a closed session, thanks.